Okay, I'm gonna call to order the Janesville City Council meeting for Monday, November 10th, 2025. And before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I just wanted to acknowledge Veterans Day tomorrow, and all those veterans, and if we could do a moment of silence before the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. In case of emergency, exit out of the nearest door, proceed to the front parking lot, and await further safety instructions. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council President Burdick?
Here.
Vice President Squire?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Katz?
Here.
Councilmember Erdman?
Here.
Did I miss anybody up here? I feel like I missed one.
Nino?
Nino? Yes, you did.
Councilmember Nino, can you hear us?
I can indeed. Can you hear me?
Okay. Councilmember Nino is joining us via Teams, and so all are present. We do have a forum.
Thank you. Agenda item 3A: Consideration and Action on a Proposed Resolution Proclaiming November 2025 as National American Indian Alaska Native Heritage Month in the city of Janesville. File Resolution Number 2025-2393. Clerk, if you could read the resolution for me, please.
Resolution Number 2025-2393: A resolution proclaiming November 2025 as National Native American Alaska Native Heritage Month in the city of Janesville, whereas Native Americans were the original inhabitants of the land that now constitutes the United States; and whereas Native American tribal governments developed the fundamental principles of freedom of speech and separation of powers that formed the foundation of the United States government; and whereas Native Americans have traditionally exhibited respect for the finiteness of natural resources through a reverence for the earth; and whereas despite a history marked by adversity, oppression, and violence, Native Americans deserve to be recognized for their individual and collective contributions to the betterment of society; and whereas Native Americans have served with valor in all of America's wars, beginning with the Revolutionary War, through the recent conflicts in Iraq and Afghanistan; and whereas Native Americans have made distinct and important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including agriculture, medicine, education, and art; and whereas the Janesville area was home to many woodland Native American tribes, including the Winnebago, Ho-Chang, Potawatomi, Sauk, and Fox tribes, and the city's rich history is deeply influenced by these early inhabitants. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Janesville recognizes November 2025 as National Native American Alaska Native Heritage Month, in the interest of expanding awareness about the contributions of Native Americans and encouraging self-esteem, pride, and self-awareness of Native Americans in the Janesville community.
All right, thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'd move to adopt file Resolution Number 2025-2393 proclaiming November 2025 as Native American...
Hey.
Is my mic on? I move to adopt file Resolution Number 2025-2393 proclaiming November 2025 as Native National Native American and Alaska Native Heritage Month in the city of Janesville.
Got a motion by Williams, and a second by Squire. Anything further?
No, I think the resolution says it nicely.
Agreed.
All right, let's vote.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And we have, we have Representative... There we go. Go ahead, right up here to the front.
I'm Renee Bueh, 408 South Main Street, Apartment 10, Janesville, and I am here on behalf of the Allies of Native Nations. I would like to start with our sharing our land acknowledgement statement. We recognize that we are meeting on the ancestral lands of Native Nations. In what is now Wisconsin, there are 11 federally recognized Native American sovereign nations and one seeking to regain federal recognition. We honor these indigenous communities who stewarded this land through the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. By illuminating Native issues and partnering with Native Nations and others, we strive to be a welcoming and supporting network for Native Nations and an educational resource for our community. The value statements of the Allies of Native Nations are: We honor Native Nations with respect and integrity. We envision a future of reconciliation through enhanced understanding of Native cultures and history. We embrace learning and sharing diverse experiences. And we are committed to communicating accurate information that reflects Native perspectives. The Allies of Native Nations accepts this resolution in honor of one of our members who passed on... ...to be with the Creator earlier this year. Billy Bob Gronn was an enrolled member of the Bad River Band of Lake Superior Chipewa Indians. He was a beloved teacher and elder to all the members of the Allies of Native Nations. He was a respected member of both the Janesville and the Greater Rock County communities. With his help, we were able to create a teacher resource guide that is used not only by the teachers in the school district of Janesville, but also by educators across Wisconsin. His guidance allowed us to build relationships with several Native American communities throughout our state and beyond. He will be remembered for his leadership, his jokes, his lessons, and his commonly-used phrases. They all know what I mean. We miss him dearly and will carry on his legacy by continuing the work that he taught us to do. According to the 2020 census, there are approximately 2,336 Native Americans or people with Native American heritage living in Rock County, and 937 of those people live in Janesville. They are neighbors and include the children and grandchildren of Billy Bob Gronn who are here with us tonight. His daughters, son, and wife are here with us. The Allies would also like to invite the community to come to see Kim Hoheleks Photography Exhibit of Sacred Native American Sites at Hedberg Public Library. The Allies of Native Nations meet every other month on the 4th Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Anyone interested in more information can email us at alliesofnn@gmail.com or visit our webpage on the Diversity Action Team of Rock County's website. Chi McWitch, thank you for your acknowledging the National Native American Heritage Month and that indigenous people are still living here in our community. McWitch?
We have... Okay, item number four: Public comments on items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing and on matters which can be affected by council action. There's gonna be a slight modification on the agenda here. What we're going to do is we're going to do all those public comments that aren't related to the data center, which is 8D on the agenda. We'll call them up first, and then we're going to do the public comments, reference 8D, right after the presentation and right before the council members discuss and vote on said action. So, Clerk, is there anybody in-house that's wishing to speak not related to the data center?
I'm uncertain, and so if you are here for the data center, you can wait to come up till later. But Diane, your agenda item says phone calls, emails from the public. Would this Diane Dooley be the time to speak, or would you like to wait till the data center? Okay, come on up to the microphone here. And then I'm also wondering about Greg Roy. It just says questions, and so if you're wanting to speak not on the data center, then come up right after Renee and be behind her at the podium and ready to speak. Diane, you'll have four minutes to speak. I'll be using my cellphone. When I hold this up, just know you have 30 seconds. It's a really bad sign, I know.
I don't expect to be speaking.
Okay, go ahead, Diane.
Let me cut in here quick before you talk. During the public comments, we ask the audience and those speaking to please be respectful of all speakers and don't interrupt them. Speakers, please keep your comments to four minutes or less, and try not to repeat prior speaker's comments. Okay, thank you.
Okay, what I've got to say was something that bothered me from the last council meeting, and usually I go along with what Heather Miller says. But one thing she said that bothered me this time, and it was that they had received so many emails, I am emails or phone calls, that you weren't able to answer them. And that bothered me because I think that's why we vote you in. We've got something to say. That everybody here called you because they had a concern, and I really think that they need to be addressed. That should be your number-one priority. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And Greg Roy, did you want to wait until the data center discussion, or are you...
Only.
Okay. So that is in this pile of 39 people signed up, the rest of them say data center. Unless I have made an error at this point, then raise your hand.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in chambers here that is wishing to make a public comment not related to the data center? Okay, moving on to item five, reports. And we have a city manager update by city manager Kevin Lehner.
Thank you, Councilmember Burdick. I just also wanted to take a moment to recognize the veterans. There has been some veterans that were very important in my life, and if you could, if you are able, if you're a veteran, could you please stand and be recognized? We have a Veterans Day ceremony in Traxler Park at 10:30 tomorrow, so if you are interested in that, the folks that put that on do a very good job at the Veterans Day ceremony. The only thing else I'd like to mention is that we do have a joint meeting of the City Council and Plan Commission to discuss a concept plan for Beloit Avenue coming up on Thursday, and so I wanted to mention that as well. That will be at the City Hall for that meeting. So in light of the packed agenda tonight, I'm gonna keep my comments brief. Thank you.
Councilmembers, if anything for the city manager references report. See none. Moving on to item six, the consent agenda. All items will pass under consent unless asked to be pulled by a council member. Item A: Minutes of the October 27th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. B: Licenses and Recommendations. D: Consideration and Action on a Proposed Resolution Approving the 2026 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Rock County Home Consortium for Submission. File Resolution 2025-2391. Item E: Final CSM-25026-C Backyard Properties of Rock County LLC, Two Lots Along Blackbridge Road. Item F: Special Assessment Deferrment, 2222 Summit Drive, Resolution Number 2025-2390. Any council members wish to pull those? Otherwise, they'll pass under consent. Okay, those will all pass. Moving on to item seven, old business, there is none. Eight, A, new business: Consideration and Action to Award the Contract for Bid Schedule F, 2025, which is C2025-15 Sanitary and Storm Sewer Lining. And here we have city engineer Brad Rents to give a quick dissertation on this.
Good evening, Council. Brad Rents, city engineer. I'm unable to advance the slides, so I'll do my best. Thanks, Nick. Here to... Thanks, Jimsey. Here to recommend award of a contract under bid schedule F. This is the annual sanitary sewer and storm sewer lining contract that we do on a yearly basis. This involves a contract where we use cured-in-place liner into our sanitary sewer and storm sewer mains, and what that does is it preserves the pipe, extends the life of it, and it helps prevent the inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer system, ultimately preventing that infiltration in making its way down to the treatment plant. The less of that groundwater that we get into the pipe, the less cost that we have to treat that at the treatment plant. This year, it includes about just under 11,000 lineal feet of sanitary sewer and storm sewer. When we put this out to bid, we received four bids, with Vigi Sewer being the low bidder at just under 1.3 million. We have worked with Vigi Sewer many times in the past, and they have successfully completed our contracts. So with that, I recommend that council award this contract to Vigi Sewer, and with funding as noted in the memo. Happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Rents? Here none? Thank you. I'm looking for a motion. I got a motion by Squire, a second by Miller. Any other comments? Questions?
Well done.
I'm happy to see that this came in close to budget.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and vote.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to new business B: First reading and Schedule a Public Hearing on Proposed Ordinance Adjusting Janesville Transit/Paratransit Fees, which is File Ordinance Number 2025-923. Council will schedule a public hearing on November 24th, 2025, and adopt file ordinance at that meeting.
We'll do a first reading, Mr. President?
Clerk, go ahead and read the...
Ordinance Number 2025-923, an ordinance adjusting Janesville Transit/Paratransit Agency fares with penalties for violations thereof and set forth in JGO 38-665.
Thank you. Moving on, item C: First reading and Schedule Public Hearing on Proposed Ordinance Authorizing Various User Fee Changes as Part of the 2026 City Budget, which is File Ordinance Number 2025-924. Clerk, could you read that for us, please?
File Ordinance Number 2025-924, an ordinance adjusting the fee for various building permit fees, business license fees, buyer response fees, and sanitation fees with penalties for variations thereof as set forth in various JGO chapters.
All right, and second reading and public hearing is scheduled November 24th, 2025. Okay, moving on to 8D: Review and Consideration of a Letter of Intent with Veridian Acquisitions LLC for the redevelopment of the former GM Jacko site for a potential data center redevelopment. File Resolution 2025-2394. And again, after the presentation, we'll allow public comment afterwards before we go ahead and vote. And the one thing I would ask for, please, is no sneering, laughing, booing, or anything like that on these comments. Everybody up here has their own opinion on things, and let's be respectful of everybody's time and the courage it takes to get up here and speak their mind on these things. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. This evening, I'm here to discuss the letter of intent for the former General Motors and Jacko sites. This is the city of Janesville's most significant brownfield redevelopment opportunity, representing approximately 250 acres. The property has been, has not been remediated and presents environmental and infrastructure challenges, which has deterred other development opportunities. The goals for the redevelopment of the former General Motors and Jacko site would be remediating the site and redeveloping the site. It is underutilized and contaminated. We're looking for opportunities that would add taxable value and add jobs. This evening, we're looking at an opportunity that would add high-tech and trade jobs. The letter of intent that we are reviewing this evening is with a group of Veridian Partners out of Denver, Colorado. They are a nationally-recognized brownfield redevelopment firm, and they have expressed interest in inquiring and redeveloping the former General Motors and Jacko sites. They have a proven track record of transforming complex brownfield sites into high-value economic drivers and assets for other communities they have worked in throughout the United States. To review, a letter of intent is a preliminary non-binding document that outlines key terms. It serves as a blueprint to create a more formal contract, helping both parties agree to some of the fundamental details before truly committing on a real estate transaction. The proposed LOI, Letter of Intent, with Veridian establishes a framework to continue due diligence, additional power feasibility, environmental review, and negotiate the terms of a future development agreement. These would both advance site cleanup and redevelopment objectives. Again, this is a not legally, non-legally binding document. It does not commit us to a project at this step. Veridian's proposal is based upon the availability of up to 800 megawatts of power being served to the site. Their proposal currently illustrates two scenarios: an eight-building scenario and an 11-building. These are hyperscale data center campus site plans at this time. Veridian would clean up the former General Motors and Jacko site and would do so with DNR's review and approval, and that is, at this time, approximately a $30 million bill for cleanup. Veridian would construct and pay for all onsite needed infrastructure upgrades, all utilities, internal roads, and stormwater management. The land not required for a data center campus would then be deeded back to the city for other development opportunities. On the economic impact, one of the biggest things on this is the value of the remediation, which is the most cost-prohibitive environmental concern in our entire community. And again, estimated at approximately $30 million. If we divided that up against each taxing parcel, right, each resident or each taxing parcel, that would be approximately $800 a person. The estimated project cost is approximately $8 billion. That would be the total project costs. Of that, about $2 billion would be directly for construction costs. After completion, the project would generate approximately $130 million in economic vitality for our community and 600 jobs. Environmental impact, you're gonna hear me say this several times. First and foremost is the cleanup of a brownfield that exists today. That is a massive environmental issue today. Current estimated water use of the proposed data center would be approximately 70,400 gallons a day, and at the height of General Motors' production, they were using 2.25 million gallons per day of water. You could increase this proposal 30-fold, and it would still be less. Incorporation of noise and exterior lighting controls within the future development agreement would ensure compatibility with the nearby neighborhoods and businesses. They also propose to do LEED-certified building design standards and utilization of renewable energy procurement commitments. Say that one 10 times fast, right? On the taxable value... My slide numbers are different than yours. Sorry, Nick, I got a little lost on that one. The 2025 assessed value for the city of Janesville is currently $7.6 billion. This proposed project would add an additional $1 billion in assessed value. This represents an increase in assessed value for our community of 13%. It's a sizable increase on one project. Based on current assessed values and with no other changes except for this project, an assessment of $1 billion for this project alone would represent an 11.5% of the total taxable value in the city. And currently, on the residential parcels within the city, they represent 5.3 billion, or 69.8% of the total. This project would lower the residential portion to 61.7 of the city's total assessed value. The addition of this proposed project would mean an additional $4.8 million in tax revenue for the city annually. The median assessed home in the city would see the city's portion of the property tax bill decrease, and this happens because the mill rate will decrease on all properties. And the citywide assessment overall would increase. We go from a $7.6 billion pie to an $8.6 billion pie, with the residential portion now having a smaller piece of that pie, and the one time in our life where we want a smaller piece of pie. On the jobs portion, in the proposal, there's discussed that would create up to 600 permanent jobs. That is direct employees for the facility as well as trade jobs on-site, all for the daily operations of this facility. The proposal also commits to first-source local hiring programs that prioritizes our Janesville-area contractors, trade workers. The data center industry job multiplier, in addition to direct employees, is 3.5 for our local economy. They also are committing to partnering with educational resources such as Blackhawk Technical College for custom training programs for the employees. For the staff recommendation, this would allow the city to continue to facilitate very important components at this stage. We'd be able to continue to facilitate our due diligence, our understanding of the impacts to our community, negotiate development terms, and maintain control over the land disposition at this time, and work through our planning decisions. Again, a letter of intent does not commit nor legally bind the city to any data center development at this date and time. I know that we have seen this several times in our public meetings and review, but again, this is where we are in the phases of the development process. There are many more opportunities for public comments, public feedback, for the Plan Commission and City Council to have a review of what will be proposed as we move this project forward. The city administration recommends approving the letter of intent with Veridian Acquisitions LLC for the redevelopment of the former General Motors and Jacko site for a potential data center development under File Resolution Number 2025- center development under file resolution number 2025-2394. I will stand for questions after I bring up our guest, Veridian. And with Veridian, I will introduce Joe Bauer first. Thank you.
City Council, citizens of Janesville. Thank you for allowing us to speak with you this evening. My name's Joe Bauer, and I'm here with Eric Zitek and Steve Gansch, and collectively, we are three of the four partners of Veridian Partners. As you are aware, as Jim C. just pointed out, Veridian Partners specializes in the remediation and transformation of contaminated sites, creating projects that self-pay for the needed cleanup without the need for TIF funds, grants, or other government financial assistance. We redeveloped lighted sites and put them back to productive use, creating jobs and tax revenue for the community. Tonight, we want to show you examples of a few of the projects that we've done and briefly introduce our broader team. With all our projects, we work closely with the municipality and community. We engage all stakeholders to create a viable solution that meets the needs of the community. We'll show you several of our projects, spending a little extra time on our Gateway project in Perth Amboy, New Jersey, which has similarities to our proposal for the GM JACCO site. At the Gateway site, the city of Perth Amboy had specific desires for a portion of the site that abutted Smith Street. We jointly created a solution where Veridian, after remediating the entire property, deeded back to the city nine acres along Smith Street, as long as another nine acres near the Raritan River for park and open space. This only worked because the remainder of the site was developed with an industrial building, the value of which paid for the acquisition and the remediation of the entire site. We expect the same type of discussion with Janesville, collaborating between your desires for the site, coupled with the use that pays for the $30 million remediation of the entire site. You know, Jim C. reiterated tonight, and Kevin mentioned it the other night on his communications presentation, that we're at the beginning of a very long journey, and we look forward to gathering feedback from both council and the community throughout this journey. This deal is personal to me. I grew up in southern Wisconsin. My grandparents moved to Janesville in the 1920s. My mother was born here, raised here, worked for Parker Penn until she moved to Cross Plains to marry my father. My uncle, after getting out of the Air Force, worked at GM and retired from there. I'm excited to make this site a part of the fabric of the community again. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to my partner, Eric Zitek.
All right. Thanks, Joe. Good evening, council members, members of the community. I'm Eric Zitek with Veridian Partners. Let me have our slideshow. So again, Veridian Partners specializes in the brownfield redevelopment and managing these complex sites. So I'm going to go through kind of some of the history of our company, some of the sites that we've done, and again, talk a little bit more about the Gateway site, which has a lot of similarities here. One of the things that Joe mentioned is that, you know, our main focus is in finding projects that will pay the freight for the remediation. The other piece of this is that every one of our projects, it begins with the remedial aspect. So not one project is ever phased from a remediation perspective. The remediation is the first phase, the vertical development is the second phase. That ensures that we don't end up with, let's say, even a potential market issue, which we did have in one of our projects back in 2008. We remediated the site in totality. We hit the Great Recession, and the site looked like a golf course when we were through, and it waited out the Great Recession until it was redeveloped. But again, that's one of our main priorities, our first priority in every single site we So this is a site in California that we did in the Inland Empire. It's in Harupa Valley, California. It's a 280-acre site, actually. What made this site unique, this was a Riverside Cement Plant, which was a 100-year-old white and gray cement plant. It was the largest producer of cement in the United States at the time. In 1984, they flooded the limestone quarry, and unfortunately, it sat fallow ever since. We got involved in the site. It was a very complex entitlements process and remediation project. We worked with three environmental agencies, the Department of Toxic Substance Control, the Air Quality Board, and the Water Quality Board to approve the remediation plan for this site. A little hard to see in the picture, but it's a pretty substantial manufacturing site that was there. But what I think made this really special at the end of the day was our work with the city and the city engineer and manager to provide about $50 million in regional and local benefits to this project. That included a $4 million park in Loufi, an 84-inch regional storm line, 70 acres of preserved open space, including 30 acres that were preserved for endangered bird habitat, and 50 acres of land for the Delhi Fly Preservation. We also, which was, this was a fun project, we hand-delivered 250 air quality units to the neighbors surrounding this site. Again, this was an industrial site, 4.2 million square feet in California. This is E-Port Logistics Center, which is a site in Perth Amboy, New Jersey. This is a 100-acre site, 1.3 million square feet of industrial space. This is a former lead and copper smelting facility that was originally developed by the Guggenheims in the 1860s. This site sat fallow for over 35 years before we got involved. A national brownfield, another national industrial firm had actually had it and worked on it for about six years and spent $6 million prior to walking away from the site, and we took over the site and eventually completed it. This is a perfect example, again, of why you don't phase environmental remediation. Every time we pulled up a piece of slab, we found something new and exciting. There's a picture in the middle on the right, which was a $2 million PCB hit. But every time, again, those smoking drums that you see, we would pull up and find just buried hazardous contamination. That was after doing two years of extensive environmental investigation on this site. And Cranberry, this is a very unique site. This was actually a munitions of explosive concern site. This is in Cranberry, New Jersey, southern New Jersey, 300, actually 400 acres, 2.8 million square feet. This one was the former Unexcedled Chemical Corporation that manufactured munitions, and the factory blew up in the 1950s. It killed two workers in that explosion, and it strewn munitions of explosive concern all over the site. This one, we ended up having to bring in military consultants just to find and incinerate the munitions. The other interesting part about this site is we actually were the largest, at the time, private wetland permit in the state of New Jersey with about 250 acres of wetlands that were placed into permanent conservation easement. We developed as part of that 40 acres of onsite wetland mitigation, forest enhancement, and other improvements. So over 20 years, we've really dealt with a hand, many, many, very complex projects. It brought every one of them to environmental closure and to full development. So as part of our team here, we partner with Langen Engineering on the engineering side. Langen Engineering is a nationally recognized firm that really provides innovative solutions to these complex environmental problems, and we've partnered with them for over 20 years on almost all of our sites across the country. We're working with their Milwaukee office now on this site. On the data center side, we're working with a group, ASG. Appleby Strategies Group is a leader in data center and power industry and have been for decades, and they understand the complexities and needs of the data center marketplace. So they are very active across the country. They're working with us on several projects on the East Coast, including, and we have 600 acres and about 1.2 gigawatts of power being generated on the East Coast that we're working on with ASG currently. So coming to our vision for the GM JACCO site. So generally speaking, the site's fairly well-characterized and exhibits many of the same things we would see across the country on other similar types of manufacturing sites, PAHs, heavy metals, specifically lead and arsenic, and volatile organics. The contamination generally located on the northern portion of the property and with some pockets on the southern part where there were some deposits of hazardous materials. We'll work with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources to develop a cleanup plan and a soil management plan to manage the process. But before all of that, we'll be working with them to develop that plan, and that'll include, we estimate, and then, you know, it's going to be seven figures worth of environmental investigation on top of what's already done, and that's really sort of a grade the paper as well as investigate areas where we feel the data is lacking for the redevelopment. So based on the data that we have, this is really a soils remediation project. The groundwater, thankfully, is not, there's no significant data showing groundwater impacts. And our plan would be to demolish those existing slabs, and if you know the site, which I'm assuming everybody here does, they are extensive between the concrete slabs and the asphalt on the southern piece. We would remove and dispose off-site any source contamination as required, based on DNR and studies. Consolidate and reuse onsite any of the contaminated soil that can remain, and we would cap the site with engineering controls, which is, in essence, is either two feet of clean fill generally or the vertical development and potentially incorporating institutional controls as well. So to walk through, this is a good time to introduce this, our project in Perth Amboy, New Jersey, the Gateway Logistics Center. This is a, we have a lot of similarities, and the city, in this instance, after we had done the E-Port project, had actually invited us and actually requested that we respond to an RFP that they put out for this site. This site had sat fallow for 25 years. Three or four developers before us had taken a run at the site and were unable to make heads or tails of it. We submitted a plan, and were ultimately selected. This site was a, really, it was a manufacturing operation for asbestos-containing construction materials. So 40% of the site was basically a landfill that contained all of the asbestos-containing material. On the northern portion of the site, we had similar issues with existing foundations and heavy metals and other PAHs and VOCs. So here, our plan always incorporated a warehouse, because the warehouse development would have paid for the remediation and cleanup of the entire site. And as Joe had mentioned earlier, over the years working with the city, we developed a plan that would allow for the warehouse development on the, in the middle of the site that went over the, and capped the landfill with nine acres of park that we developed on top of the remaining landfill. And on the northern portion of the site where the existing foundations were, we were giving that back and have given that back to the city of Perth Amboy for the development of what they will ultimately decide will be the goal for that site. We had worked with them over the years on a handful of sites from amusement parks to retail, the multifamily, sporting parks. There was a dinosaur park at one point. But because a decision couldn't be made, we determined that we'll remediate it, we'll bring it to a pad-ready condition for the city. This is a retail plan that I showed just as an example of a concept with a potential for a small grocery store, small inline retail, a public plaza in the middle surrounded by some standalone restaurants to take advantage of that plaza. See if I can go back. It's not letting me. There we go. So anyway, the city will determine how they want that site to be redeveloped over time, but even as a brownfield, we can do the work to make that a very flexible reuse. So going into our concept plan for the data center site or for the GM JACCO site, so we've proposed an eight-building and an 11-building campus. The eight-building campus with 600 megawatts really takes a look at the need for hyperscalers needing scalable power. So that's well in excess of 250 megawatts and the need for power, or, I'm sorry, the need for fiber. The northern portion of the site would be fully remediated, as we've mentioned, and would be delivered, we would work with the city to come up with a plan for that site. The concept there, too, is that because we haven't done the environmental investigation, we're not entirely sure if there are any VOCs that would actually prohibit the development of data center space. VOCs have an off-gassing, and in some cases, you need to have indoor air quality. Indoor air quality monitoring is a no-no in data centers. They won't, it just will not be allowed by the users. So that space there is shown as completely open. And the other concept is if it is developable, and if we do decide that that's something that makes sense, we have an expanded project of 11 buildings and 800 megawatts, and again, significant open space on that site, and we would work with the city to determine what to do with the remaining space. I think the critical, excuse me, the critical component here is from a land use perspective, data centers are generally low-impact and high-value compared to other uses. We'd be able to remediate the entire site at a cost of about $30 million. We have high-value design with extensive landscaping and landscape buffers, create 600 high-paying jobs, minimize negative land uses, impacts like truck traffic and diesel emissions that are associated with other logistics and manufacturing uses, create substantial direct and indirect investment and benefits in the community, and create substantial tax revenues, as Jim C. already has mentioned. I won't go into too much on this, since Jim C. has already stated them as well. But again, we're looking at investment of over $8 billion into this development when it's all said and done, with 1,200 construction jobs, 600 full-time once it's completed, with the direct and indirect investments stemming from the development benefiting the community at large, from unemployment opportunities and local spending, with the, with an estimated $600 million annually in estimated value of that impact. So as discussed, we're at the one-yard line. This is the first of hopefully many meetings, but this is something that is not going to happen overnight. We anticipate that it'll take, well, at least two years just to get through the environmental piece and the power procurement process. We expect to be working with the city the entire time, hand-in-hand, to try to put a plan together. But we're very excited for the opportunity to work with you all, and with that, we'll line the presentation.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, and we are here for questions that you may have at this moment.
Now, just to reiterate, these questions are for council members only, not the public. So who wants to go first?
Hi. So with this being in a TID already and the statement that they didn't need TIF funds, how would that work for the TID?
We wouldn't need to keep the TID open for the entire remainder of the timeframe. We could close it at an earlier timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
And we could review when would be the best time for that, as it goes under construction and completion.
Council, have any other questions for Jim C.? All right. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
All right. So this, at this time, we're going to get to public comment. So this is the time for members of the public who want to address the City Council regarding the data center. The clerk will call you up. Again, Again, be cordial of other people, try not to disrupt them, don't clap, don't sneer, things like that. It takes a, it takes a lot of courage to come up here in front of everybody and speak their opinions, and everybody's opinion matters. And, you know, I represent the city council and the city of Janesville, and I'd like to keep a decorum here that is representative of the citizens of the city of Janesville. Thank you. So clerk, if you want to go ahead and get started.
Sure. First will be Malachi Paim, followed by Emmanuel Martinez. So as Malachi makes his way to the podium, if Malachi's still in the room, then if Emmanuel Martinez could maybe get to the middle in the back there. Third to speak will be Matthew Carr-Larick, and fourth to speak will be Brendan Polkinghorn. So, Malachi, you will have four minutes. I have a really fancy sign to hold up at 30, and then my phone will go off and you'll need to stop. So go ahead.
So, I, the main thing I want to address first is that I feel like this is all coming out of nowhere, like, pretty quickly. As of six months ago, I haven't even heard of an AI data center being built here. And so I just wonder, like, why is there such a rush? And so, for me, I think it might just come down to a, after seeing something that the city manager had posted in terms of explaining, like, fact-checking the nature of the data center, I think it comes down to corruption or not having Janesville's interests at mind. Because for one, who will even wind up owning this data center in the end? With the cleanup costs that are going to be covered for supposedly by Veridian, that sounds incredibly generous. We're being essentially sold the best possible picture from the salesman themselves. And for the people who could possibly be owning this data center, you know, Peter Thill from Palantir, Jeff Bezos, Elon Musk, Sam Altman, Mark Zuckerberg, which among them have you ever heard has been particularly generous? The idea that, you know, property values won't go down from the sound because there will be houses nearby, the idea that this massive amount of water that will be required to cool this data center won't cause bills to rise, the fact that, the idea that an 800-megawatt AI data center will not drive up prices for a county that takes from as little as 20% of that amount to, in the most, the most generous figure of just half that amount. So we're either, we're going to be seeing energy draw for Rock County go up from anywhere from two to five times. I don't see how that's not going to cause energy prices to rise. So overall, there's a lot of costs that go, that are going to be involved with this data center, but there might be more jobs. I forget the exact figure, but at the end of the day, this is going to be an AI data center, it's going to take a lot of high-skill jobs. How many people in Janesville are actually going to be able to work there outside of the lower-paying jobs? When you account for the amount of cost that Janesville residents will have to pay in terms of their, the bills that will go up, how many of those wages will actually go to Janesville and how much of them will come, will go to commuting workers coming out of Madison in Milwaukee, who will more than likely not be spending their wages here, but just simply taking them back to the cities where they live? I believe that is, oh, there is one more other thing. The idea that because the AI data center will admittedly use less water than General Motors did at the plant as a somewhat of a selling point, I think is relatively unconvincing, given the fact that General Motors closed down in almost 15 years ago, perhaps more. That was a lot better of a time for Janesville. Janesville was a lot richer of a city and could afford the enormous amount of water that General Motors used. When it comes to how much people are struggling on the day-to-day basis these days, and with how little the AI data center is actually going to give back, it is going to be significantly harder for Janesville residents to pay the rise in water costs. And that's not even getting into anything else. I'm running out of time, so I'll call it quits for myself here.
Thank you. Just please hold the applause so we can get on to the next speaker.
Emmanuel Martinez, you'll have four minutes to speak, and I will hold up the sign. Go ahead.
Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Emmanuel Martinez. I live at 820 North Garfield Avenue, and I'm a resident of Janesville as well as a registered nurse. Thank you for the opportunity to address this council. I want to highlight some significant concerns regarding the impact of data centers on our community. Many of these facilities rely on backup diesel generators, which emit harmful fine particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, and nitrogen oxides. Additionally, with a growing reliance on fossil fuels for their energy sources, the location of these data centers becomes crucial in determining potential disproportionate pollution impact in our communities. Another pressing issue is PFAS, a class of around 16,000 chemicals commonly used to make products water-staining and grease-resistant. These compounds have been linked to serious health problems including cancer, birth defects, decreased immunity, high cholesterol and kidney disease. Dubbed forever chemicals, they do not naturally break down in the environment. A longitudinal study published in the ISEE journal revealed that exposures to PFAS throughout childhood may have sex-specific effects in adolescent cardiometabolic risk. Furthermore, a 2024 paper from researchers at the University of California, Riverside and Caltech, found that data centers could contribute to 600,000 asthma-related symptom cases by 2030, leading to public health costs exceeding $20 billion. Unfortunately, these costs weigh most heavily on disadvantaged communities where the health burden per household could be 200 times greater than in less impacted areas. It's important to note that medical expenses or loss of income due to health issues are consistently identified as the leading cause of personal bankruptcy in America. In July, former President Donald Trump emphasized that building new AI infrastructure and ensuring America wins the global AI race are national priorities. His administration has committed to easing regulations and streamlining permitting for new data centers and energy infrastructure. Recently, OpenAI's chief financial officer, Sarah Fryer, suggested that the US government should backstop the company's significant investments in artificial intelligence infrastructure. This comment was later walked back by OpenAI CEO, but the idea of a backstop, a financial arrangement providing secondary source of funds to prevent instability raises concerns about the financial implications out in our community. Elected council members, let's not repeat the past and learn from our mistakes with GM. Please do not make hasty decisions driven by fear. Janesville is not for sale and is not desperate. Consider the health and future of your children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Let's ensure they can breathe clean air in Wisconsin's Park Place and reduce their likelihood of developing asthma and other preventable health issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Matthew Larick, followed by Brendan Polkinghorn, and then Dennis, he's going to have to help me with his last name, 1807 North maybe Sumac Graham, so you'll be on deck after Brendan. And go ahead.
My name is Matthew Carrick, I apologize. I live at 1606 Fortham Avenue in Madison, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and comment on this issue that affects not only the residents of Janesville, but residents in surrounding communities and I would argue the nation. Veridian promises that the proposed data center would bring new jobs and growth to the community. However, the vast majority of these jobs would be transitory. The AI companies that would use this data center tout their technology as an investment that would allow the elimination of jobs from the workforce. Take, for example, AI startup Artisan AI, you may have seen their advertisements with the slogan, "Stop hiring humans." I have my doubts about the ability of AI technology to deliver on that promise in the near future, but what I don't have doubts about is that developing a new data center in this community would bring harmful impacts to everybody in Wisconsin. In particular, I'd like to address some things I found on the Data Center Myths and Facts document available on the city of Janesville website. The document acknowledges that the center would consume a vast amount of electricity, but claims that it would not strain the grid or increase energy rates. The reasoning behind this is that building the center would necessitate improvements to the energy grid infrastructure. Now that doesn't make sense to me as to why those improvements would be necessary if it won't strain the grid, and I certainly don't understand how it would be possible to so dramatically increase the demand on electricity without driving up rates in Janesville and in surrounding communities because of the fundamental economic law of supply and As evidenced by a nationwide spike in electric rates that has outpaced even the worrying pace of inflation, of inflation in general. The document further states that the center will use more water-efficient cooling methods, and while that might be true, it's still going to be consuming a vast amount of water, and many of these more efficient water cooling technologies actually use even more electricity than older methods, which would further increase rates and consume the water that is used in electric generation in the first place. Why are we pursuing this AI technology? Have the promised benefits of this technology manifested? A recent MIT study, "The State of Business in 2025," found that 95% of AI deployments in the private sector have failed. Billions of dollars are being thrown into a hole that even Bill Gates describes as a bubble akin to the dot-com era. Please, for the sake of the people of Wisconsin, anyone with a power or water bill, anyone with a job, and for the planet, please do not allow this development to continue. The risks are high for residents, while the rewards will be captured by outside investors who have no reason to care about this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Brendan Polkinghorn, then we'll have Dennis Graham, followed by Seth Lambert, and then Cassandra Pope. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name is Brendan Polkinghorn. I live at 2502 Galahadaway. I'd like to ask you guys to consider continuing the proposal process through the due diligence phase of the developer's proposal to allow them to continue investigating the site and the feasibility of them coming to town. Further information from the developer's due diligence period and remediation planning would provide more information for the city and its residents to make an informed decision on the best use of the property. Based on my personal research into the topic, as with anything, there's pros and cons with two data centers. In my opinion, the pros outweigh the cons with the proper protections in place. Power agreements that ensure that the added infrastructure costs are contractually tied to the developer, estimated water usage agreed upon prior to construction, with city approval required prior to expansion, and further monitoring the water usage during operation to ensure usage is within the agreed-upon amount. And lastly, site remediation performed by the developer with minimal public funds to ensure the site, to ensure the site is usable should the development fail its original purpose. In general, the site should be remediated to help discard the city heel. Remediation of the site would ensure the city has an adaptable asset for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dennis Graham, then Seth Lambert, then Cassandra Pope, then Julie Backenkeller.
I probably should have taken the opportunity when you said somebody doesn't want to talk about this, although I do. The big thing is, you know, I heard sometime, I think as someone who knows the price of everything and the value of nothing, our water. I worked at GM for 16 years. My personal calculation there with the bubbler's running, because they used it to flush their toxins into our river without any holding system up until 1989, I thought they were using closer to $6 million a day. And I'm sure the city likes it because they were making money. But, I'm going to lose my point here. 25 years ago, I took my four minutes in front of the city council to tell you people about a system called Scaleban, S-C-A-L-E-B-A-N.com. The Culligan Man has put that company out of business. EcoSoft Engineering folded their corporation, I believe, in '90. But Walmart sells a $29 electronic descaler that takes 20 minutes to hook up, $3 a year in electricity, no wastewater, and you actually have soft water. Saltwater ion system is nothing but decalcified water. And what creates hard water is hydrogen cross-bonding. The water that comes out of a saltwater ion system is about H50, H70. A Scaleban system puts out H5, H6 after it goes through there, and it removes scale. And right now, we've got 400,000 gallons of saltwater brine contaminating our treatment system every day due to the saltwater. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, they're worse than Big Tobacco. They look up Scaleban, do the evaluation for yourself, it's a simple system I've had in my house for 25 years. Six months after putting it in, my wife's psoriasis went away because H5, H6, it's almost rainwater, for everything in your house, for everything, for our treatment. And, no, the water isn't unreasonable, the, you know, what a, big question I had was, where's all, they've done all these sites, they're doing this, where do all these contaminants And I worked there for 16 years. I know they buried some boxcars out there that, really nasty stuff that even they were scared to put in the water. I've heard that story, I didn't know about it, but $30 million to clean this up, to me is a boondoggle. I met an Arab back in '81, and he was some sheik going to whitewater, and he said, you know, it's not us getting over and you're on your gas, that's your gas companies. We get royalties. He goes, that's Trump changing us. You know where we got you? Cement. The only thing we have more of than oil and gas is cement. The way the oil well, or the oil percolates through the sand, he says, what do you pay for a bag of Portland, pal? Because that's us. Hempcrete makes a product that's six times stronger and lighter. This state, you know, used to have the hemp that does that. We could do our waterways, filter our water. I think we should put a cement operation in there using hempcrete. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Seth Lambert, then Cassandra Pope, Julie Backenkeller, and Colin Schultz. Seth Lambert?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Seth Lambert. I live on East Milwaukee Street in Janesville. I'm secretary of the Rock River Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. I've been a Janesville resident my whole life. My parents worked at the General Motors plant, my grandparents worked at the General Motors plant, my aunts and uncles worked at the General Motors plant, and many of my friends' parents worked at the General Motors plant. They were all proud members of the UAW 95 Union. When the plant closed, it was like the heart had been ripped out of our community. In the years following the closure, I, sorry, I was lucky to become an active participant in the organic music scene that grew around the Zox411 social club. In my eyes, I saw Zox as the last relic of the General Motors plant, a living, breathing monument to the working men and women who built this community, union workers who understood the meaning of solidarity. It was shameful when the city forced Zox off of its land, and it's shameful now as the city sits before us attempting to force through this poison project. It is an insult to the community, to the environment, and most of all, to the memory of the workers of UAW 95. Data centers, whether they are feeding artificial intelligence models or storing complex surveillance information, are the antithesis of solidarity, beastly, inhuman, and apocalyptic. They represent the creeping grasp of Silicon Valley billionaires who seek to make us obsolete, to remove agency from skilled workers and artists, to commodify every last aspect of the things that make us human, and then charge us rent just to get a glimpse of them. Don't believe the hype these data center folks are feeding us. Don't let them come into our community and disrespect our history. This council ought to listen to the overwhelming voices of the people and reject this data center project.
Thank you.
Cassandra Pope, Julie Backenkeller, Colin Schultz, Aaron Agutter. Cassandra Pope, Julie Backenkeller, Colin Schultz, Aaron Agutter. Go ahead, Cassandra.
Cassandra Pope, I am your neighbor from a half mile from this site. Trust, that's what this all boils down to for me. I don't trust these big billion-dollar corporations, and I don't trust our city government to hold these corporations accountable. If you could give us a data center that checked all the boxes, it's sustainable, it has minimal health impact, there's no rise in energy bills, the hundreds of jobs you're claiming, and somehow it'll bring in the millions of dollars to the city that you're promising with a guarantee that you won't just dump it back into the project through the TID. If you could guarantee us a data center that looked like that, I wouldn't be standing here. There would be no reason to oppose this. But you can't. The city can't guarantee any of those boxes will get checked. That's why they keep saying phrases like, "We might be able to," and "we could potentially," and "there's opportunity to." Not once have they said, "We will make sure we protect our community. We will make sure we have safeguards in place. And we will make sure this is done ethically and sustainably." Not as ethically as possible, not just ethically, period. Not more sustainably than past data centers, sustainably, period. I am for economic development. I am for growth and revitalization. But the problem isn't just this project, it's also the process. The city administration is making decisions without us, all of us, and they are, they're making decisions without us, behind closed doors, and they're using manipulative language to sell us on this idea. And I gotta say, it just looks bad on the city. These are billion-dollar corporations. You might as well be trying to herd great white sharks if you think that you're going to be able to control them. Data centers are known to agree to X, Y, and Z, but then during construction say, well, we were gonna do that, but that didn't work out, so now we have to do Q, R, S, and T instead. These billion-dollar corporations are known for screwing over communities like ours. They make it look perfect on paper, but they don't follow through. Why would they? They have no invested interest in our city. And all they care about is their short-term bottom lines. And who's gonna make them follow through? You? The only control you will have is what is statutorily written, and even that is subject to interpretation in court against their big-time lawyers. Unfortunately, the control belongs to the people with the money, and in this situation, that is not our city. You would risk the health, the livelihoods, and the quality of life for everyone within a mile of this place, and the environment that your comprehensive plan says you so deeply want to protect, on a hope that this will just magically work out? Trusting these companies is a huge risk. And if they don't follow through, which the likelihood of that is very high, the fallout from this could be detrimental to our city in a way we might not be able to bounce back from. Our citizens' lives are worth too much to take that risk. According to the timeline that the city provided that was just up on the screen, after the approval of this LOI, the next step is formal purchase offer. Then they will do the studies with the information that some of you are looking for. If you're on the fence because you're wanting more information, you aren't going to get that information until you've already decided to go forward with the data center. Make the city manager spell it out for you. At what point, after the formal purchase offer, would the city council have the ability to say, "We don't want a data center at all"? They'll say you have ability to approve or deny a project from a developer, but the developer will still own the land with an intent of a data center. Eventually, the city can get sued for being obstructionist if they don't allow one. The only time that you're going to have the ability to say, "No, you do not want a data center on that property," is before the formal purchase offer, and unfortunately, before you're even able to get the information that you're looking for. That's proof that there is a process problem. Our trust in our city council and our administration is broken. Hopefully, that lack of trust will be repaired tonight with a common-sense vote against a data center. If not, I hope it'll be reflected through the voting in the upcoming city council elections.
Thank you.
Julie, Julie, Julie Backenkeller, then Colin Schultz, then Aaron Agutter, then Claire Gray. Go ahead, Julie.
Julie Backenkeller, 719 North Grant Avenue. I want to say that I appreciate the infomercial that we had Tuesday night with the city manager last week and with Veridian being here tonight to give us. But where is the balance? Where's Clean Wisconsin to give the other side of the coin here? There's no, this is an infomercial that we're getting. If data centers are so great, then why are so many communities fighting them? That's my question. Yeah. In all fairness, you really should have a speaker here from Clean Wisconsin. You're leaving the counterpoint to your residents, and that's, it's not fair of you. So, okay, so November 6th, a senator in Wisconsin and a rep introduced legislation that would hold data centers accountable for their energy and water use, worker protections, and environmental impact. The proposed legislation, the Data Center Accountability Bill, LRB 5432, would be the first law of its kind in the state of Wisconsin to ensure that the growing data center industry pays its fair share for the energy and infrastructure it consumes rather than shifting these costs onto Wisconsin taxpayers. So I'm asking you to slow your roll a little bit because the state is working on something here, and I feel like you're trying to shove something through that, without the counterpoint, you can go online and read the bill, but there's several points on there that are important. But what they've said is that Wisconsin taxpayers shouldn't be subsidizing massive tech companies that use enormous amounts of energy and water. Okay. So, I gotta look up the rest of my notes. I'm thinking about the $30 million that they said it's gonna take to clean up the GM site, and I'm sort of curious why General Motors didn't clean that up. I mean, shouldn't we all be getting a free car or something? Why didn't GM clean it up? It makes no sense to me. Why are we on the hook for this? And now we're being sold that these people are our saviors. Okay. Once you do this letter of intent, once approved, then the city has effectively picked a path. And then your next thing is a formal purchase offer. I want to remind everybody that on November 10th, 2017, Governor Walker's WEDC passed the Foxconn deal behind closed doors. A secret $3 billion Foxconn contract approved without public vetting. And I think that's where your residents are kind of having a problem with this, that it sort of feels like it's, we're not having time to really look into this. There is a reason why these companies are coming to Wisconsin, and that's because of the Great Lakes and the water, our aquifer. And I'm asking that you delay this vote, that you don't move forward to this until you look into this state bill that's being considered. There is a project that's right for that property, for that site. We put so much money into rail and into Innovation Parkway, or whatever the name of that road is down there, for GM, and then they left. And I don't feel that 600 jobs is an accurate number that they're giving us, and there is something better for that site. I just want everybody that's here that's opposed to this, if you would mind standing, so we can kind of get an idea, how many people here oppose us.
No, you're a public comment, and how long has she got left?
She's done.
I'm done.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So we got, sorry. Delete it here. So Colin Schultz, Aaron Agutter, Claire Gray, and then Casey Peterson. So Colin, go ahead.
I spend about two hours of my day going through this 68-page proposal that was put on online. My primary concern after going through all these documents presented by Veridian is the amount of non-committal and vague language around all the beneficial items they've listed in last week's informational meeting. On jobs, operator of the facility has not been chosen, so all the high-tech leadership and senior positions are out of their control. We do not know who they'll be hiring, or they're bringing new people in. Per ADSG study, it calls out 600 of those direct employees and contractors will only provide security and maintenance services. That tells me they're only emphasizing lower-wage, non-high-tech, high-visibility jobs, and they have an emphasis on hiring introductory employees, not high-level senior staff. On the environmental side, per Veridian in Section 3 of the proposal, they will target, evaluate, and prioritize all their environmentally friendly initiatives. There's no committal language of, "We will do these things." They are a multi-billion-dollar corporation. If they wanted to do these things, they would do them. There is the money to do these things. And on the power side, per the acquisition proposal, Veridian only needs to secure a power agreement of a minimum of 600 megawatts. Instead of writing language, they will commit to secure the amount of power required for this facility. They have left a number in there that gives them the ability to, oh, we've done 600, that's enough, we provided that, the rest can be on someone else. Additionally, these agreements for the power supply are going to be between the power company and Veridian, and the city will not have any ability to interfere between this private agreement. There will be no public comment or concern about these agreements. So we're in a position where we won't know what these agreements are going to be. And I want this to be a very public and visible process, and it seems to me there's going to be a lot of studies, a lot of vague language where we're not going to know what's going on. I urge you, if you're going to proceed with this facility, which I do not want, that you could put, and make sure that Veridian commits to firm, committed language. If they want to do something, they will do it if you make them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Agutter, Claire Gray, Casey Peterson, Lucas Carter. Go ahead, Aaron.
Hello, everybody. Aaron Agutter, 526 Laurel Avenue. Some really good points have been raised here tonight. I just want to make a comment on the size of this data center. Everything I've heard in any news, talked to anyone in the community, "Data center, it's a data center." What's it gonna run for power? Maybe 10 megawatts? Standard data center runs maybe 10 to 100. A big hyperscale runs about 200 megawatts. They proposed 800-megawatt data center. That's the equivalent of 500,000 homes in a residential community such like Milwaukee. That's a lot of strain on the grid and a lot of concern with construction on that. So, we think about that, they talked about that, the question of the power lines and the transmission lines that have to go through there and where they'll be going. We've talked about the noise issue a bit. We've, they were talking about a 60 decibel hertz possibly with the units, the compressors, and the fans. Now, if that's consistent, that can still be a hum throughout the town, to the point where many, many communities are having issues with the sound, to the level of not only in the immediate vicinity, up to three miles away, there's a constant hum. It's not a train that you hear occasionally, it's not some traffic, this is 24/7. There's also the issue of daytime use of, I think it's gonna be diesel generators or whatever type like that, which they've okayed on the thing, up to 80 decibels. That 85 can actually damage hearing. Now, if you've got that many compressors on a size with 11 factories, these are data factories, you could argue that, that's gonna be quite a sound in the community. I don't know how you can dissipate that at any level that there's any claims like that. We would have to have some assurance and some culpability if that gets broken. On that note, again, you can hear this up to three miles away, there's a city in Virginia, I don't have the exact add-on it, but there's numerous issues with that going on. You also have some issues with EMF radiation that would be going on. They will have to tap a line that runs up toward Madison from the Beloit Power Station. That line alone would take some substantial governmental regulations to get in through Janesville. That line would most likely run over either Monterey Park or along Dullevan Drive. EMF radiation, now granted, directly under these lines is incredibly dangerous, there's numerous studies talking about different things like leukemia in children and other issues. Now, it does dissipate. But the question then comes, actually was raised tonight that I thought was very interesting, is that we have, obviously, the Monterey Park there, you have Wilson School, you have the Rotary Gardens. All these could be affected, for one, by the noise problem. The noise could go all the way into Janesville City proper. Back to the Monterey issue, there was discussion tonight on the Monterey heritage of Native Americans of this area. That park, Monterey, should actually be a historical site. The Big Rock, Monterey Rock, is what this county's named on. If we have power lines running right over that, the actual viability of that park could be compromised because people are aware of the dangers of mega power lines running through. So that is, I think, quite a concern also. There's numerous studies on EMF hazards with that. Jobs, okay, GM, I think, I'm not sure, I think it imploded 600 jobs probably, I mean, excuse me, 3,000. We're talking about 600 jobs. That sounds good, but this is 11 factories worth. How many jobs per factory of that? Okay. So, I also have a question. Let me see, sorry, I gotta wrap this up here today for y'all. The outreach, what outreach did we get for the community? We could have had a mailer, we could have known what's going on. We have big presentations, which are very nice, but we are just local, you know, citizens trying to do our best to get around with, I think has been pushed through quite quickly myself. With all the great information you've been handing, it seems like a good idea to possibly refer this back to staff, take a look at it, get some counsel imported, and that would be the wise decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claire Gray, Casey Peterson, Lucas Carter, and Natalie on Thicket Lane. Natalie, when you do get up here, Natalie, I'll have you pronounce your last name for me. Go ahead, Claire.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your service to the city of Janesville and its people. Serving as a city council member is a volunteer position, and I want to express my gratitude that you spend your personal time working to make Janesville the best place it can be. My name is Claire Gray, and I represent for Janesville the Janesville Area Chamber of Commerce and Private Economic Development Organization. I have also been a Janesville resident for 10 years. I am here to urge you to vote yes to entering into a letter of intent with Veridian. GM Jacko is a brownfield site that has sat unactivated since 2009, 16 years. The site holds enormous potential to positively contribute to Janesville's economic vitality once again. It has remained undeveloped over the last decade and a half because of its contamination and differing community perspectives on the site's highest and best use. It is also competing for developers' interest with 224 acres of greenfield sites at Innovation Park on the south side. It is owned M2 industrial, which means it is suitable for many large-scale business uses. The Centennial Park Plan was unveiled in 2019, and it envisioned heavy industrial and manufacturing on the site. The plan was positively received by residents but subsequently went nowhere. In 2022, an intermodal facility was pitched, but limited job creation and increased freight traffic from trains and trucks was a major hesitation for city officials and community members. Consequently, the intermodal facility never came to fruition. A data center is permitted under the M2 industrial zoning classification, but residents are rightly raising questions about its impact on the environment, residential energy rates, and public health. And there are questions around the release of project details and feelings of mistrust. This situation is part of a larger narrative unfolding in communities throughout Wisconsin and around the country as data center construction booms fueled by a daily-changing technological revolution that feels just as dizzying as it does promising. We have to focus on the decision at hand, whether or not to move forward on evaluating the merits of an economic development project. What we know about entering into the LOI is that it is a non-binding agreement that signals consent between a private entity, Veridian, and the public entity, the city, to continue to explore this opportunity within a 120-day time period that will allow Veridian to work with the Wisconsin DNR to understand further the level of contamination and allow Veridian to work with Alliant Energy to understand the timetable for delivering power to the site, which will impact future development plans. Entering into the LOI phase will give us important information about the site's development potential, information that will be needed at the next step of the process, which will be deciding whether or not to enter into a binding purchase agreement. Entering into the LOI also gives the city time to craft a development agreement that responds to community questions about a data center development and the needs, priorities, and values our community has when it comes to economic development overall. Within this 120-day time period, we are asking that the city schedule additional community engagement sessions that are open to the community as a whole, one or two, and specific neighborhood-level activations, two to four, so the city has a full understanding of the needs, priorities, and values of Janesville residents. By taking a needs, priorities, values approach, the city can better understand the bigger picture and use that information to structure meaningful agreements. Additionally, Veridian can use that information to inform site planning. Since the data center is an industrial development, it would also be helpful to understand the potential public health impacts of the data center vis-à-vis our current industrial operators. The graph that the city showed about usage, current industrial usage, and the data center potential usage was very instructive to really understand the actual local impact rather than using the generalities that a lot of people are using to understand what this would look like. By not moving forward into the LOI phase, we are risking continued inaction on this site. If not this project, then what? And more importantly, when? Other brownfield redevelopments in Wisconsin have taken decades. If all this pans out, it could be six years in which we have a productive site. Are we gonna wait another generation?
Thank you.
Casey Peterson, Lucas Carter, Natalie, and Mick Gilbertson. Go ahead, Casey.
Last Tuesday, we, the community, were given a snake oil sales pitch regarding the Veridian data center, whose letter of intent is brought before all of you tonight. And I am here as your neighbor to, once again, implore you that you spurn this proposal once and for all. A lot of people here today have already made mention of concerns about the vague language... A lot of people here today have already made mention of concerns about the vague language that Veridian is using. This is intentional, it's called greenwashing. It's a tool that's been utilized by a lot of corporations for the last second, seven decades. Specifically regarding the closed-loop systems, they are more water-conscious than open loops, but they still come with their costs. Water still needs to come from somewhere and needs to be expelled. Data center operators often prefer potable water, that's our drinking water, over reclaimed water, because reclaimed water is our recycled wastewater. The pollutants within this recycled wastewater corrode their loop systems and take away from their longevity, that was not mentioned last week. And this information can easily be obtained from the American Society of Civil Engineers. The only evidence provided for the potential increased cost of electricity was that they would not, because our electric rates are protected by the Public Service Commission. That may be true in terms of cost for usage, but the dissemination costs for transmission infrastructure are determined federally, not by the state. The federal government has used the same system for nearly a century. It is not illegal, but it is outdated. That is, transmission infrastructure costs are spread in equal portions among the customers of the utility building them. This can be read more in depth from Johns Hopkins-Ralph O'Connor Sustainable Energy Institute. Data center owners also often have special contracts with utilities that are confidential to the public and only obtainable by either of the aforementioned parties, or, in Wisconsin's case, also including the PSC. This information was researched by Harvard Law. But I don't wish to bore everyone with facts that they've likely heard or read 1,000 times already while the GM Jacko site has been under contention for the last few months. I'd rather address some things that were said last week. Mr. Lanner repeatedly told our community to invest, or investigate Loudoun County, Virginia as an example of a community positively affected by their data center industry, so I did that. To his credit, Mr. Lanner was truthful about the increase in home values in Loudoun County as well as lowering real estate property taxes. Loudoun County, Virginia, has a very large tax base, thank you, thanks to their data center industry, but this is because of the personal property tax paid by data centers in Loudoun County, which has generated most of their revenue. Personal property tax, for everyone's information, includes the equipment that they build for them to run. That is the source of their large revenue. Personal property, please remember that while I look at Wisconsin for you. Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation has forms for data centers built here in Wisconsin to receive tax exemptions, more specifically, sales and use tax exemptions. And what does that mean? They are exempt from taxation on their equipment if they invest $200 million into a county the size of Rock that has over 100,000 people. This investment only needs to include building their campuses. Mr. Lanner said this development would be about $8 billion. So in layman's turn, Veridian builds their data center here, and they receive a tax exemption on personal property. Loudoun County, Virginia, may financially benefit from their data centers, but we would likely not see that benefit in the same way. You can also find numerous articles from BBC, Bloomberg, Smithsonian Magazine, and other credible news sources on the negative impacts to the livelihoods of those living near these data centers. This includes the noise that Mr. Lanner assured us would not be of any concern, the strain on the energy grid, and impact to wildlife. I'm not saying that a data center here in Janesville wouldn't impact us economically, but I just want you, the council, to consider the word sustainability, since that has been thrown around a lot. There are three pillars to sustainability. And to be sustainable, it needs to achieve all three.
Lucas, Natalie, Mick Gilbertson, and Ray Jewell. Go ahead, Lucas.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Lucas Carter, and I live in Rock County with my family. And I'd like to add my voice, and the voice of my wife, who can't be here today, to stand against the proposed data center. These data centers are not only producing artificial intelligence and surveillance, they are producing water pollution, light pollution, noise pollution, high electric bills, and depleting our natural aquifers. They are not in anyone's best interest except the people who own them. If AI could give us a Star Trek utopia, this might be a different conversation. But we can all see that the exact opposite is happening. Since the 1970s, tech companies have helped to create an explosion in economic productivity, and yet the money never trickles down. Jobs are disappearing, wages are flat, and workers are left in one of the hardest job markets we've seen since the Great Recession, leaving many people in poverty or homeless. If AI were here to help us as promised, then why are there ads currently running in Silicon Valley that say, "Stop hiring humans"? That's us, those are our jobs. And there's a reason there's such an incredible turnout here today. We know what's happening, and we want, we know what's going to happen if we let data centers like this take root. We are standing up because we refuse to sell our futures and pollute our environment for the sake of shareholder profits, just for the rich to get richer. We need to stand together, putting our bodies upon the gears of the machine to make it stop, here and in Port Washington, into Forest and Menominee, and everywhere that data centers are being built, until the tech companies understand that they are not welcome here. Please stand with us and the overwhelming majority of our constituents against, of your constituents, against this data center. Don't sell us out. Don't sell out our futures and the futures of our children. Thank you all very much for your time, and good night.
Natalie, I'm going to have you state your last name for me.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Natalie Carmona. I am not a resident of Janesville, but I am down the street, 75 Thicket Lane, South Beloit, Illinois. I'm really concerned about this data center because I turned 23 yesterday, I hope to have a very long life here in southern Wisconsin, which I love, where I've been raised, and I worry about the future, not only of myself, but of my peers, and also of my children. One of the first people who spoke quoted the same essay, the same research paper that I read, which argues that overall public health costs will exceed $20 billion. I worry that in a country where healthcare is exorbitant, is expensive, where people are dying because they can't afford their insulin, who's going to foot the bill of the children who become sick from the pollutants? You say it's a brown site now, I get that, I want to clean it up, but we're going to put a data center on top of that, is that not just going from a frying pan into the fire? Or maybe a walk of some sort? Like, it doesn't seem like an environmentally conscious solution. I don't doubt that the people of Veridian, one of the gentlemen mentioned that he also has a strong connection to the city of Janesville, and I don't doubt that it's true, but I worry, is Veridian going to foot the electric bill? Is Veridian going to foot the hospital bills for the people that may suffer from this? We don't know enough about the effects of the data center, I think, to make this decision. And I also worry about the proposed plan of making the offer to, sorry, the offer to buy, and then doing the research of what's potentially on the land. I don't know that I would buy a car without inspecting it. I don't know that the health of my child is worth, what was the figure, $800 per taxpayer? I don't know that it's worth 600 jobs that I'm sure are not going to go to Janesville residents, that are definitely going to be given to people in Milwaukee, in Madison, people who are not from or of this community. I, until very recently, was working in Janesville. I consider myself a part tangentially of this community, and I worry about the effects that this will have further down the line. If a data center is so incredible, is so wonderful, is such, like, the perfect solution, why are the people building the data centers not doing it in their own backyards? Why won't Sam Altman do it in his hometown? Why won't Mark Zuckerberg do it in his hometown? Because they know it's dangerous, they know it's damaging, they know that the human cost that's going to come from this is just not worth it. And I hope that Janesville has many years of economic success, but I don't think that the data center is the way to do it. And in fact, I think the people of Janesville will suffer for it. And I, and I worry about what this says, about the value that we place on the people of Janesville. Why are we willing to pollute the water? Why are we willing to risk it? Sorry, this is my first time speaking, but I just really wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Mick Gilbertson, Ray Jewell, Aaron Klipstein, and John Gackstetter. Go ahead, Mick.
Good evening. My name is Mick Gilbertson. I'm here on behalf of Forward Janesville Board of Directors to urge the City Council to adopt File Resolution 2025-2394, approving the letter of intent with Veridian Acquisitions LLC for the redevelopment of the former GM Jacko site for a potential data center development. The LOI is the next logical step in the process to assure the city and Veridian are able to complete their due diligence. The due diligence will allow for further exploration of the impacts of the proposal without entering into a binding agreement. This location, while offering significant potential for economic revitalization, presents unique challenges due to its history of contamination and recent abandonment. Previous interest has been limited due to these challenges. Any industrial, manufacturing, or other use of the site would require remediation. These costs would tend to make these projects difficult, if not possible. Veridian's proposal is the first in 10 years that can positively address these critical issues facing the site to benefit the south side and the greater Janesville community. This is an opportunity to ensure that any development undertaken is safe, sustainable, and beneficial to our community. The process of due diligence will provide further detail on the proposal's conceptual land use plan, site remediation, providing sustained property tax base, onsite long-term tenant, and the creation of short-term and long-term jobs. At the completion of the due diligence period, the city will have additional information to further evaluate the impacts of Veridian's proposal. By taking this step, the city can move forward for or against the proposal with confidence, knowing the decision is informed, responsible, and in the best interests of Janesville's future. This site has been integral to Janesville in the past and can be once more. Completing the due diligence on this proposal is the next logical and fair step. Thank you for your attention and your commitment to the city's progress.
Thank you.
Ray Jewell, Aaron Klipstein, John Gackstetter, David Reich.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I was going to say something else tonight, but my King, King Jesus, has been working on my heart and mind the last few days. I forgot the teaching of my Lord when he said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." And who is our neighbor? Anybody and everybody. How does that have anything to do with the topic of discussion? Let me submit to you, it has everything to do with the topic, maybe not data centers directly, but how we are treating each other in the process of public and private discourse. I'm a pastor, all of you should know that by now, and I do a lot of talking, that's my stock in trade. Words are very important to me, they should also be important to all of us who are here listening. Words like civility, a form of politeness and courtesy in behavior and speech. For instance, at the last council meeting when two representatives from Forward Janesville came to speak, they were shot down by a chorus of boos. The city clerk even tried to remind people to treat all speakers with respect, but no, many in opposition of the data center booed again. Words like nuance, a subtle difference in or shade of meaning, expression, or sound. In other words, being black or white, either or, in dealing with others, leads to discord and an us-versus-them mentality that winds up getting us into the mess we are in today, a people divided. Words like trust, the firm belief in the reliability, truth, or ability of someone or something. Trust has been broken in this situation, but it's not too late to restore that, is it? Can we come together and actually listen to each other's reasons for wanting or not wanting a data center? Can we be civil enough to listen actively to what is being said, not using what someone is saying to formulate my comeback, my counterattack, to score points from my side of the argument? Words like community, a group of people living in the same place or having a particular characteristic in common. We all want what's best for this community. I believe that includes our city manager, and our city government, and our city council. Let's see if there's a way to resolve this issue before it tears this community apart. Words like Karen. I saw several men in favor of the data center idea referring to those who are against the same as Karens. I took the time to look up the original meaning of the name. Karen traces back to the Greek Akaterin, emphasizing purity and moral integrity. So I'm proud to be a Karen, as should all of us who oppose the data center. Purity and moral integrity are good qualities to have. And the hardest word for me of all these is patience, the capacity to accept or tolerate delay, problems, or suffering without becoming annoyed, or anxious, or angry. So, I'm a pastor, I'm compelled to pray. Some of you may have heard this before, it's the prayer of Saint Francis of Assisi, and I think it fits here. Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace. Where there is hatred, let me show love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, it is in dying that we are born to eternal life.
Thank you.
Aaron, and then we'll have John Gackstetter, David Reich, and Max Ryan. Go ahead, Aaron.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Aaron Klipstein, and I'm on South Grant Avenue. I'd like to ask a few questions tonight, and they're not rhetorical questions, but they're questions that I think deserve answers before we move forward with this letter of intent. The first question, if this proposal is as strong as it is being positioned, why do some of the details fail to line up? The Veridian proposal claims 600 permanent full-time jobs, yet also states that staffing will be limited and parking lots will remain mostly unused. Which version is true? If traffic counts and site design reflect minimal staffing, are we overstating the community benefits just to justify public investment? Next question, the city has described this as a once-in-a-generation opportunity, but I'd like to know whose generation we're talking about. TID 42 can stay open for up to 27 years, nearly three decades of tax diversion, while the lifespan of most data centers is 10 to 15 years, sometimes less. Did you know that the standard depreciation curve for data centers is three to five years? Why do you think that is? What happens to that site and the public investment when the technology shifts and the data center is no longer viable? Next question, Veridian has not publicly identified a tenant, so this project seems to be speculative. Should the city be extending incentives and infrastructure commitments before there is a guaranteed occupant? What if they find an occupant who wants something different than what's in the proposal? How will that be managed to ensure the promises that are being kept are made for our neighbors? Wouldn't a more deliberate approach protect our taxpayers and ensure that public dollars are matched to real and confirmed outcomes? Next question, the letter of intent will lead to environmental testing to be conducted by the developer, not an independent agency. How can we claim independent oversight when the party with a financial stake is, in the outcome, is also responsible for evaluating the environmental risk? Is that due diligence, or is it a conflict of interest? And I also want to point out what I think is missing in the process, we haven't heard from people with lived experience, people who actually live near a data center of this scale. We don't know what the noise, the vibration, the light, or the constant hum of power lines feels like in daily lives, and these voices have been completely left out of the conversation. The pace of this process is what also should concern us. True diligence takes time. It takes time to verify claims, challenge assumptions, and hear from the people who will actually be affected. For a project of this size, diligence should be a many, many months-long process. I would argue that 120 days of diligence is not sufficient. Rushing to an LOI now doesn't demonstrate confidence, it's haste. We need to take the time to compare what's being said to what's actually written. I'm asking the council to slow down and ask before committing public trust and public money if this proposal can stand up to scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Gackstetter, then David Reich, then Max Ryan, and then Angelina. Go ahead, John.
All right. John Gackstetter, 222 South Wisconsin Street, Janesville, Wisconsin. I'm here representing and speaking on behalf of the Government Relations Council and Forward Janesville, and in support of the city entering into a letter of intent with Veridian Acquisitions LLC to commence due diligence efforts. GRC supports the growth and strength of the city through development to include technology, manufacturing, infrastructure, and immediate and long-term job growth, as well as an increasing tax base. GRC sees this step in the process as a healthy and normal step of any redevelopment process and project, and an opportunity for the critical parties to address the current capacity and opportunities for the redevelopment of the GM Jacko opportunities for the redevelopment of the GM Jacko site, as well as the future capabilities, all in context of the community, contamination, and infrastructure. This step will allow the parties to answer the question, is this a part of the right solution to redevelop the GM Jacko site? Thank you.
Thank you.
David Reich, Max Ryan, Angelina Yu, and Donna Nell. Go ahead, David.
David Reich, 1946, Riverview Drive. Few days ago, a couple weeks ago actually, my wife was listening to The Hobbit on an audiobook that she had rented from the public library here. And a couple days after that was done, I was going to Google the smell of something, and I typed in SME, and it finished off Sméagol. For anybody who lives under a rock, Sméagol was one of the characters in The Hobbit. How did they know that? Because everything that you hear, say, everywhere you go, and everything you buy, is stored in one of these data centers. And all of you have probably had, I should say, experiences like that. If you've ever noticed, you're talking to somebody in your family about going to Florida, and you open your computer, and there's ads for hotels in Miami and flights down there. Everybody I know has had this happen to them, and if you haven't, you aren't paying attention. And that's what these data centers are for. They are for storing, again, everything you think, do, and say, so that they can target ads to you. This has nothing at all to do with keeping up with China, with advancing AI, with making America technologically stronger. It has only to do with making some short-term money. And as wonderful, wonderful statement about how quickly these data centers wear out. Shouldn't have interrupted myself with that. But I think I've got the point on that. It's not just that we don't want a data center here, we shouldn't have them at all. And it's not just what you want to buy. They're sometimes kind of helpful for that, although it's terribly expensive way of doing it. But their GPS is good for three feet, and so they can tell whether you're at the gun counter in the store, if you think you bought a gun but you didn't register it. They know when you were standing in front of a gun counter, they know when you went to a gun show, they know when you wrote a check. And if they want to know if you were at the New Kings rally last week, they can look that up. And the only thing that we are competing with China on this is how close a track we can keep on the people of this country. This is not something we want. It's not good for anything, anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Max Ryan, then Angelina Yu, then Donna Nell, then Bill Mitchell. Go ahead, Max.
Hi, I'm Max Ryan. I work at Ryan Incorporated here in Janesville. I live here in Janesville as well. So at Ryan Incorporated, we've worked on similar-sized data center projects as this, so I can confirm the construction boom of a project of this size. The trades workers will be very busy, restaurants, caterers, hotels, et cetera. However, like many people here, I was still very concerned about the long-term impacts of something like this coming into my community. However, the proposal from Veridian addresses the vast majority of those concerns, and the key now is for the city to get a very good consultant and get firm commitments from them and enforceable agreements. I would say we should include clawback provisions, but there's literally nothing to clawback. They're not asking for anything from us. So at this point, there are risks from moving forward, of course, but there's a much bigger risk if we close the door right now. And here's why. Data centers need two things. They need electrical capacity and access to fiber. Our 250-acre contaminated site happens to have both, which is a rare advantage. This is why Veridian is offering to pay $30 million to fix it. If we close the door on them, they're not going to go away. They're going to go somewhere outside of town, whether it's Beloit, or Afton, or Orfordville, wherever, and they're going to pay $30 million to build a bunch of power lines and fiber, connect to our grid, and in that scenario, they're still on our grid, they're still on our aquifer, but we have zero influence over the project. And we still have a contaminated site that we have to figure out where we're going to get $30 million to fix. So for those reasons, I strongly support moving forward with a letter of intent. Lastly, if people are worried about the national trend of data centers' impact on climate change and AI taking jobs, I would recommend you join me in writing our congressman-style, Senators Baldwin and Johnson. Unlike our city council here, they can actually write legislation to help ensure that AI makes everyone's lives better, rather than allowing a handful of billionaires to pocket the cost savings of millions of layoffs. And also, unlike our volunteer city council, they actually get paid to listen to our complaints. So, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Angelina, then Donna Nell, then Bill Mitchell, and then George Cullen. Go ahead, Angelina.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angelina. I'm a longtime resident of Janesville and an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I am here to make a statement of opposition to Big Tech Data Centers Initiative we are seeing unfolding here now in Janesville and all over Wisconsin. Across the country, big tech companies are in a race to build hyperscale data centers. Tech companies are investing billions of dollars to build these enormous facilities, leaving residents and communities footing the bill while dealing with the increased electricity bills, water bills, and health decline. Under the control of these big tech corporations, these hyperscale data centers are resource-hungry, guzzling up water and electricity to train AI models. These centers are popping up next to low-income and vulnerable communities to siphon off electricity that could be for the public and diverting it instead into AI. Data centers developers are attached, attracted to our region of the country because of the Great Lakes. As we know, these centers take lots of water for cooling. That's why we're seeing so many developers quickly making deals with local governments behind closed doors in Wisconsin. Billionaires and their money-hungry friends are going to be raising our property value, raising our property taxes, and taking those tax incentives into their pockets. How is that fair to our community? We will be bearing the risk for billionaires and their friends that are pushing data centers into towns like Janesville's, cities like Janesville. Energy companies like Allian are absolutely happy to accommodate these tech companies as they will be profiting from these centers' energy consumption. We cannot and will not let this deal go through without a fight. I urge everyone here to please find one of our volunteers with a clipboard to sign our petition to delay the development of the data center. This petition was created for residents to decide the future of that site. With our collective power as working-class residents of Janesville, we can change the outcome of the city's data center initiative and protect our community, neighbors. We can't fully predict what the city will do, but it's worth a fight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for reference, there's about 22 speakers left, so the sooner we can keep everybody rolling. We've got Donna Nell, Bill Mitchell, then George Cullen, Alyssa, I always mess it up, Capazilo, and Devin Schoiler. So, Bill, go ahead.
Good evening, and fellow citizens, city council members, and other elected officials. May surprise some of you, but all of us here in this room are your boss. And it's good to check up on our employees now and then. The lady before us, just before me, excuse me, mentioned about a petition. Here's a golden opportunity for our council to prove that you really have the interest of the Janesville residents at heart. But when that petition comes through to you, that you will pass it and say, yeah, that's a good idea. We want to hear from the people on the referendum, and this has got to be pretty quick. And if I can steal a line from Smokey and Bandit, Smokey and the Bandit, we have a long way to go, but a short time to get there. There were several great ideas brought up this evening and at the previous meeting. And one that piques my interest is transmission lines. How much power is going through them? What is the stray voltage effects? And where is it coming from? Where is the power going to be transmitted into this data center? And we talk about the data center, where's the data coming from? And how does it get out of here? It's another one. How about the water? Where's the water coming from? Where does it go when we're done processing? While they're under construction, is there any expense for the city concerning those surrounding roads? Do those have to be beefed up? Are they going to get worn out? We don't know. There's no answers to this. What about the other data centers? And this number 600 employees keeps coming up. I'm sure the consultant you're working with can provide us with several examples of 600 people that have permanent jobs in the towns where that data center is located. And I think that we need to know that. What's going to be the architectural impact? Well, bigger these buildings, what are they going to look like? I think somebody brought it up kind of briefly. We talk about noise pollution. What about vibration? Is there going to be backup generators? Do they vibrate? We don't know. We need these answers. The brown field, a lot of talk about that. Great, they're going to take it all out. Where does it go? Who's going to get it? Does it get processed? We don't know. We need answers to those things. So... There's a water voltage effect. I think I covered what I wanted to cover. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir.
We have George Cullen, then Alyssa C., then Devin Schoiler, and then Greg Turco.
Thank you. Hello, my name is George Cullen, Co-President of JP Cullen and Vice Chair for Forward Janesville. I do, as well, want to thank you all for your role, crucial role, as city council members. It's appreciated that you take on this role for the community. I'm here also to express my support for moving forward with this LOI. I won't repeat all of the things that have been said previously, but I do just want to call attention to a couple points. First, this one has been said, but this LOI allows both parties to explore if this is the right fit for this site and the right fit for Janesville. It gives city staff, it gives the consultants, it gives the city council the time to continue to determine, is this the best fit for the site? The developer of Veridian Partners is reputable, and they have executed projects like this that are very complicated and have brownfield sites. The developer is not only agreeing to pay for the land, but also to clean that site, which is a massive opportunity for our community to get that site so it's developable for something. While two options were presented, I personally see the value in option two that would allow for more development to happen at this site, that the city council, that city staff, and the community determines would be the best use for that site. Finally, this project will create significant union construction jobs through the construction of this. Those jobs will come from our community here. So again, thank you for your service on city council, and I appreciate the time to speak to you.
Thank you.
Alyssa, then Devin, then Greg Turco, then Shane Seaman.
Hi there. I'm Alyssa, neighbor from North Sumac. Thanks for being here. I keep coming to these meetings because it seems impossible to run out of questions, and there's a lot of information out there, and I'm looking for peace of mind that I have not found, so here I am again. I have come to informational meetings put on by the investors here, some put on by concerned community members, and have dug deep into some environmental studies on sleepless nights. Some of my questions have already been proposed by others, and I try my best to weed them out, but I think I have some specific ones that have not been asked, such as, in the event of loss of coolant, will the data center stop operation to fix the problem rather than divert the groundwater from the community? What measures will data centers take to ensure that during a power failures, citizens have priority for natural resources during restoration? What protections will be in place for the health and safety of citizens if a data center uses alternative power sources during a power failure? How will the precious commodity of water and electricity be conserved strictly for the benefit of Rock County citizens in the event of a crisis? What negotiations took place to make sure that Rock County doesn't suffer financially if the data center decides to withdraw during any part of the construction? What negotiations took place to make sure that Rock County doesn't suffer financially if the data center decides to sell the facility at any point? How do we know if the quote on the amount of water and energy being used by Veridian is accurate? Can it be verified by a reputable, non-bias source? I'm glad at every turn the shareholders and investors are taken care of and protected, but what about our community? What about our kids? Should the public be allowed to be manipulated and subjected to accepting risks that haven't been fully disclosed? What is the rush on this project? I came to the first meeting for the RFP proposal a couple months ago, and some city council members admitted they didn't understand what a data center was or how it worked, and we've still voted to move ahead. There's a lot of concepts here, a lot of information to take in, and some of it seems pretty abstract. But what will this mean for our future? Have you read the environmental studies? And I do mean studies not presented by those who have staked in this, real information by objective sources. Just tonight, my 17-year-old was fact-checking the Veridian presentation in real time, and the numbers do not add up. From job numbers to water use, environmental impact, it does not add up. Do you have clear answers, objective statistics, and tangible guarantees that our collective concerns as a community are not valid? I don't think anyone here has enough information to justify going forward with this. If you don't feel confident or have more questions than answers, or want a clearer picture, please wait on this. The lot has been empty for almost two decades. What's a little more time to make sure we make the right decision for our city? I think Janesville is worth it, and I hope you all do too. The majority of the people have spoken here over the last couple of months on social media and indirect message with all of you. Will you listen? Earth provides enough to satisfy every man's need, but not every man's greed. Mahatma Gandhi. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Devin Schoiler, Greg Turco, Shane Seaman, John Risk.
Thank you. My name's Devin Skyler. I'm a proud member and resident of Janesville. I live on Garfield Avenue. Thank you for those of you making eye contact and paying attention. Are we awake? Are we listening? I am here to urge each of you to vote no to signing the letter of intent for the data center here in town. Many of us, proud residents of Janesville, have hundreds of questions. How is it that only one city council member had a single question for the representatives of Veridian? I find that frustrating, disappointing, and alarming, but thank you, Michael, for asking one. We've heard the same talking points over and over the past two weeks, that 600 potential jobs may come of the data centers. But with a city of 66,400 people, I am deeply unimpressed about the potential of 600 jobs on a plot of land that even at the end of the GM era was still employing twice that number, and that was during the plant's shutdown. Veridian has stated how deeply it cares about the land remediation, but the truth is, the land remediation of a brownfield site for redevelopment is required by law in order to be redeveloped. Ask yourself, how much do they get by spending billions on remediation? Do not be fooled. Veridian and companies like this are not doing this for the goodness of their hearts. They are looking to take care of their shareholders. I don't care if there's a company member here that has connections to Janesville. Does he live here now? No, he does not. Does he have a data center in his backyard? No, he does not. Last week, Mr. Lanner spoke about how he visited Loudoun County data centers and waxed poetic about how impressed he was by their quiet nature, how clean they were, the people he spoke to who said it was great. But has he actually spoken to the people who live near the data centers? As the Ashburn... But has he actually spoken to the people who live near the data centers, as the Ashburn folk who live there? Because I have. I'm from the DMV. I'm from Bethesda, Maryland, born in DC, and I have friends that live in Leesburg and Sterling, Virginia. Ashburn, where the data centers are, is situated between them, and I have asked my friends, what do you think? How's it going? And they are unimpressed. They have had pieces of their land taken from them so that the power company, in perpetuity, so that the power company could install the necessary power grids. People have had their properties destroyed. They do not have resale value. I think a large majority of those of us who live and work here have done, that have done any research on these centers, do not support the development that you all seem so eager to push forward so rapidly. City council members, why are you moving so quickly on this development deal? You are all moving too quickly on a matter that has far more negative impacts to local humans, animals, and the environment. Slow down. Do not sign tonight's letter of intent. We, the people of Janesville, voted each of you on the council, and we expect that you will hold up your end of the bargain by listening to what the people want to say. We have questions. We don't need to rush this process. And to be clear, we don't want you to sign this letter of intent tonight. We don't want it. And if you choose big corporations over the people who actually live here and put you on the council, we will remember that come next election. And in the meanwhile, we will continue to fight and stop the redevelopment deal as it is set forth tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg, Greg Turco, Shane Seaman, John Risk, and Ben Ryan.
Hello, everyone. I'm Greg Turco. I live on Hearthstone Drive, and I'm happy to be here talking with you tonight. Janesville is a working city. It's a living city, and it needs to build and grow. There are good reasons to build this, which previous speakers have already talked about, and chief of those being cleaning up the EPA's brownfield site. Secondly, the 600 jobs. And third, the big boon, the big addition to our property tax base, which is very important because of the Byzantine way we fund our schools toward the future of raises for our teachers. I had some reservations coming into this specifically involving noise for the adjacent neighborhoods, particularly on Cherry Street or Jerome Avenue. But I was glad to see in the eight building plan that the Veridian put up that they're not going to be developing in that plan in the northern area and the areas within which were adjacent to those neighborhoods. And so I think that that's a big improvement. And you noticed, I also noticed on the site maps that they put up for all the sites that they had significant setbacks from the fence lines, which should help the noise, particularly if they plant the trees that they had in the diagram as well. So that was encouraging. I want to point out that all the people who have been worried about noise have not been talking about the gun club that's located in that area. I can certainly hear the gun club. There's also a rail yard behind the neighborhood on Cherry Street that is also a source of noise. I believe that the data center should be required to use the best available technology for noise control, and I think that in conjunction with the other measures, that the noise could probably be managed. I think that Janesville is a working city. We've always had factories. This isn't exactly a factory that we're putting in this data center is something different. But I think that if we don't do this, you know, what do we got that's better? What are we going to put better on this site? That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shane, then John, then Ben Ryan, then Dave Henke.
Hi, Shane Seaman, 1,008 South Oak Drive. I want to try and give you a comparison or a little case study. One of the first experiences I had with city of Janesville government was when I was still too young to vote. Sneakers Sports Bar was coming in by my parents' house. We knew the owner as a family friend who knew the industry and had run successful bars already, so I thought that it wouldn't be controversial. The developer of that property hosted a few neighborhood meetings to hear what the neighbors had to say, what concerns they had, and what they could do to be good neighbors, good tenants. The city council at the time praised the investment company for having these meetings and going out of their way to do that. In these meetings, there were fights, fights about lighting, about noise, neighborhood impacts, public health impacts, and so on. It took time before the city did end up giving final approval to the bar, and my family and I still give them our business. We're lucky to have them. Compare that with this scenario. Who even knew who Veridian Partners was before this summer? Who will their actual data center client be? What kind of business will that client do? What kinds of active outreach is Veridian engaging in or committed to engage in? I know there's a long way to go before a final approval, but why move so quickly on this multi-billion dollar project compared to a simple neighborhood bar? Or for that matter, the $20 million building that we're standing in right now? The city found its own money for that. I also had an experience applying for an open city council seat a number of years ago when Matt Keely had to step away. In that interview process, all of the applicants got questions about how we get more people involved in local government. Even now, I've heard sentiments during council and plan commission meetings that there's normally very few attendees. And they're right. These meetings are almost always totally empty. But people care about this. They care about this in a big way. The Packers are on, and they showed up. Even more showed up last time we were all in this room. We can't say that everyone's opinion matters and ask how to get people involved and say that we listen to the ones who show up, and then continue through this rush process when the people who show up and get involved and give their opinions are, as they showed earlier when they all stood up, saying no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
John, then Ben Ryan, then Dave Henke, then Shar Hermanson.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Jonathan Risk, 1151 West Baldwin Court, Mecklenburg, Wisconsin, which is near Port Washington. Now, you might be wondering, why did I come out to Janesville? And I'm glad people have that question, because I would like to talk about my experiences as an organizer for the Party for Socialism and Liberation in Port Washington. One thing I noticed that was very interesting at the beginning of this meeting, you know, when the suits came up and gave their presentation, was that for a 240-acre, roughly 240-acre site, they're estimating about 600 jobs. Well, what kinds of jobs? Are we talking about 600 temporary construction jobs? I mean, it can't be that, because then who's going to work the data center? Is it 600 permanent jobs? Well, it can't be that either, because who's going to build the data center? But now, let's just assume for a minute that it's just going to be built immediately, and we're going to have 600 permanent jobs. Well, then, I have to ask the question, how is that possible when the Port Washington data center that's estimated to be built is a 2,000-acre site with 300 permanent jobs in Vantage's estimation, which is the company that's building the data center? So either Vantage or Veridian isn't doing their homework. Another thing that I thought was very interesting is for a 240-acre site, it'll consume roughly 600 to 800 megawatts of power. Well, the one in Port Washington is a 2,000, roughly 2,000-acre site, which is almost 10 times the size of this one, and that one's slated to consume about one and a half gigawatts of power. So you're telling me that a site that's almost 10 times smaller is going to take half the power of a site that's 10 times the size of it? Something really doesn't add up here. Now, one thing that I noticed is that we are in an AI bubble. Now, economists just from all across the political spectrum, they're saying, guys, we're in an AI bubble, and we're going to have to do something because this bubble's going to pop at some point. Now, talking about those same jobs, we all understand that corporations, they only care about, I mean, they have a fiduciary responsibility to their shareholders to make profit, and they don't care about these communities, our communities. So what happens when that AI bubble bursts and there are contracts with unions for labor? Do you think that they're going to make the calculation to continue building the data center when it's most likely cheaper to just break the contract and take on all the legal fees? I mean, that's typically what happened during the dot-com bubble and many other historic bubbles that we've seen in the past. You also might be wondering, well, if I go and organize, who's going to care? And at least in Port Washington, what I have found is when you tell people that their representatives are doing their best to make sure that they don't get a say in what's going on in their community, they will organize, and they will organize quickly. And at least in Port, all of the aunties are coming out and knocking on doors. So if you think you can just not let a billion-dollar project go to referendum, you got another thing coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, Ben Ryan, and then we'll have David Henke, Shar Hermanson, and Kevin Algiers.
Thank you, city council. My name is Ben Ryan. I'm a Janesville resident, and I'm here to voice my support for pursuing this letter of intent from Veridian for the data center development of the former GM site. A lot of valid points have been brought up tonight, and I actually do have my own reservations as to what the potential implications of the AI revolution that's happening globally might bring. But I, along with my brother Max who spoke earlier, I have seen the enormous development, the enormous investment that comes with these projects and the benefits that they can also bring, and specifically for the city of Janesville. The GM site has remained such an insurmountable challenge for revitalization since becoming vacant 15 years ago because the contamination from its previous owner makes it significantly more complicated, expensive, and risky to build than on a greenfield. The LOI in front of the city council offers to take this liability off the city's hands, create a massive short-term burst of economic activity for local workers and businesses, and create a long-term boost in tax revenues. This will put the city in a better position to support long-term growth of the city, supplement funding for our school system or municipal functions, or, like was said earlier, potentially lowering the tax base of existing residents. Out of some of the other concerns that have been brought up that I would hope that the city council will pursue and address after this letter of intent is assigned, assuming it is, one that I would want to point out is the power, the power draw and the potential impact to ratepayers is a valid concern. Whether or not it impacts local ratepayers will depend completely on the power purchase agreement that is signed between the development and the Andaline Energy, so that is something that I think the city council should focus on, because those can be, those can be set up in a way that it will not impact existing ratepayers, but they can also be set up in a way that they do. So that's something that should be looked at. But this letter of intent should definitely be signed to move on to the next steps and address the concerns and take advantage of this incredibly rare opportunity for the city. So in conclusion, there are potential costs with this decision. With every big decision, there's always trade-offs. I do significantly believe that the benefits of this development significantly outweigh the costs, and I encourage the city council to proceed to the next step of this letter of intent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Henke, Shar Hermanson, Kevin Algiers, and then Tony Capizello.
Dave Henke, 528 South Franklin. It is tied 0-0 at half. And I agree with everything he just said. I think we need to take a risk at this. I drive by that plant every single morning on my way to work and on my way home, and I see an empty, unproductive land that's been unproductive and empty for 17 years. We are only a couple of years away from missing a generation of people in this town. That's not fair. We need to do something. We need to move, get going, sign the letter of intent, let's figure it out. Okay? It doesn't mean we're bound by iron to do this, but we need to at least get moving in a direction before we lose another generation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shar Hermanson, Kevin Algiers, Tony Capizello, and Kimberly Liebergen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shar Hermanson, President and CEO of Forward Janesville. We represent 615 companies and 12,000 employees. We are the Chamber of Commerce and Private Economic Development Organization of Rock County. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to each of you who did attend tonight's meeting. Your insights, questions, comments, and leaning into the future of the GM Jacko site are invaluable. Special thank you to the council members who are dedicated to the work of this city. For nearly a century, the site has been the cornerstone of local and regional economy. It has served as an economic engine, adapting as manufacturing has evolved. Over time, we've seen significant improvements on the site's infrastructure, including two rail lines, enhanced access to I-90, and as our former city manager wisely noted, an access road that was built for what comes after GM. However, operations at the GM site ceased in '08, and in March 2018, the city of Janesville and the Community Development Commission established an overlay district to pave the way for future development. In 2018, the iconic 4.8 million square foot facility was demolished and the materials were recycled. Fast forward to '20 and '24, the city took decisive action to condemn the site due to lack of progress with ongoing violations from that current owner. The city council approved a $3.85 million to acquire the site and again demonstrate the community's commitment to revitalizing the site. By July 2025, we saw interest from the data center community, and a potential RFP was sent out. Now, we enter this critical phase in the journey. The next step outlined by the city of Janesville is to ask for a letter of intent with Veridian Partners to explore the project further. It is essential to recognize that various milestones must be achieved before we can determine the value. We have 120 days of due diligence ahead of us. This timeframe allows Veridian to collaborate with the DNR, evaluate the environmental assets, and develop a scope to remediate the site. Additionally, Andaline Energy, an American transmission company, will be able to assess power availability during that time. The period is crucial for our community and project developers. Forward Janesville is committed to fostering consistent and respectful dialogue throughout the process. We firmly believe that community engagement is the first step towards successful community-centered economic development. The benefits to our community are significant. You should all know that business really cares about your community. Our organization has surveyed our members and found that number one is providing affordable housing to our community. Number two is investing in workforce. This project will allow workforce redevelopment through skilling, reskilling, upskilling investments. We are encouraged by the opportunity to use significant tax increases paid through this investment to support our children's education. This will help our students prepare for whatever industry is next. It will improve power infrastructure and capabilities here in Rock County. We hope a community development fund will be established for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, is it Algiers? And then Tony, C., Kimberly, Al, Brandy Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Algiers. I'm a network engineer with more than 12 years of experience working on large-scale IT systems in the financial, government, healthcare, and education sectors. I've spent my career building the kinds of infrastructure that powers data centers, so I understands what, I understand what these facilities require. I've written to this council twice because I care deeply about this issue. I love technology. It is my career, but that passion should never come at the expense of anyone's health or quality of life. Let's be honest, this is not a normal industrial park. Data centers, especially AI-focused ones, operate around the clock, 24 hours a day. They draw enormous amounts of electricity and produce significant amount of heat. That requires constant cooling. These aren't quiet office buildings. In the most advanced environments I've worked in, where companies had their own dedicated electrical and construction teams... electrical and construction teams, they still couldn't guarantee that the power would be perfectly reliable without backup generators. That's simply how this industry works. These facilities depend on large-scale, sorry, large diesel generators to stay online during power interruptions. They're approved for emergency use only, but in reality, they run often for testing, maintenance, and to cover power fluctuations, creating regular noise and air pollution for those in the surrounding area. We've already seen the consequences of this elsewhere. For example, residents near several large data centers in Northern Virginia and Memphis, Tennessee have reported consistent generator noise and emissions, and in some case, have filed complaints or lawsuits when emergency-only generators were operated more frequently than permitted. Janesville should not repeat these mistakes. Most data centers I've worked on are located in downtown or industrial zones, areas with robust power and fiber infrastructure, and sufficient space to buffer and absorb their environmental impact. There's a reason for that. Data centers do not belong next to homes. I'm not against progress. I work in IT, and I believe in innovation, but progress must make sense. I'm asking the council to pause this project until a full and transparent environmental and community impact assessment is completed, and it's clear that this development will truly benefit Janesville residents, not corporate investors. Thank you for your time and for taking seriously the concerns of the people that you represent who will live with this decision for decades to come.
Thank you.
Then we have Kimberly Liebergen, Brandy Martinez, and Greg Roy. We're down to nine.
I'll be as quick as I can. Thank you. The issue before us, and I mean us, tonight is really not the character or integrity of Veridian. It's really about data centers, truly about data centers, and what they represent and the challenges that they pose to us as a society. Veridian will account for the mess that GM left behind, but again, as was stated earlier, the Public Service Commission is very clear on who's going to pay for the upgraded Alliant Energy investment. One of the things that I think is helpful for all of us, because I'm going to try to take a big look at the tech, and as a former teacher, I'm always thinking about kids. And so I'd like you to just kind of take a step back because a lot of us don't understand even what these things do. And so if we would just follow the money for a second. In 2021, the president had signed an Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which pumped $1.2 trillion of money into construction workers' pockets through their companies and communities. The bridges, roads, water, pipes, public transportation, high-speed internet, electric grid, work, et cetera, all boosted our economy. That's what government investment did. Nobody had to show up at city council meetings to protest the influx of the investment across the US. Conversely, the data centers are being pushed in great number at lightning speed by venture capitalists. These are private investors with domestic and foreign ties. I invite everybody to let their thumbs go wild and type in some well-known names to see if you recognize any of the people who are making a killing on this, on us. Unlike the Infrastructure Act where there wasn't us involved in this, that is not what this is. Everyone here is just a pawn in someone's game, and it's a money game that we need to say enough. Some of the proponents of economic development present here are amazing employers and take care of their employees. Some of the larger organizations are pro-growth, but I often question how much they look out for the little guy, as most of the jobs that have been created here post-GM do not pay what GM paid. And a lot of people have to work two jobs to make ends meet. So back to the data center, which is going to take from us. They take pieces of us. It's us that they want. They want our thoughts, our ideas, our retinal and facial recognition, our location, our conversations, our actions, geothermal imagery of our homes, our health information, data on our kids who have yet to even have the right to click "yes, I agree" to your lousy terms and conditions. All this stuff is what's being housed in these centers. We go to the library, which is a data center, but the library gives to us. We go to, we go down the street, and the data center takes from us. It takes us, all of us, and we really need to take a step back. We are the gatekeepers for our kids. We have no idea five, 10 years from now, the power that these things are going to have. We just don't. And just because people think we got to jump on board because it's here, you got to jump on board. Well, cancer is here too. Anybody want it, raise your hands. I don't think so. You know, just because it's here doesn't mean we have to be the first ones in line. And again, as a former teacher, I'm telling you right now, we have yet to catch up with these. The impact that these have had on our kids and us, we have not caught up to this yet. And yet, we're going to encourage this by inviting this kind of stuff in our community. I really think you owe it to all of us, and we owe it to each other, to take a step back and make sure we don't become the next Minority Report set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly Liebergen, Brandy Martinez. Then we'll have Greg Roy, Todd Needham, and Sam Neamets.
Good evening. I'm Brandy Martinez, resident on Garfield Avenue in Janesville. And tonight, I'm going to spare the astrology, even though people know that you're not supposed to sign important documents when Mercury's in retrograde. But today, I brought a very important book to me. It's called "The Serviceberry: Abundance and Reciprocity in the Natural World." It's by one of our very own former Wisconsinites, Robin Wall Kimmerer, who is not only a professor at UW Madison, she's also part of the Citizen Band of Potawatomi Nation. I want to thank you for acknowledging Native American Heritage Month. Robin's also a mother, a scientist, and author. She also managed the land at UW Arboretum up in Madison. And if you haven't read any of her books, I recommend starting with Braiding Sweetgrass. I also brought a leaf from my serviceberry tree, which I planted after reading one of her articles during COVID, when we were all in lockdown. And what I've found is conversations around having that plant in our front yard grew a lot of relationships in our neighborhood. One, in fact, was my next-door neighbor who gifted me this book for my birthday last year, after I painted, you know, an artwork on the actual serviceberry itself. The reason I bring this up is because we are seeing economies changing all around the world. Scotland just recently adopted what's called a well-being form of governance, which is where they definitely take fiscal accountability into how they structure their governance. But instead of focusing solely on their balance sheets and the economic and fiscal responsibility, they have three other objectives. One is collaboration by sharing expertise, practice, and learning between well-being partners on integrating well-being evidence and analysis into policy processes and advice. The other objective, embed the well-being economy approach by demonstrating how robust analysis and evidence supports policy, ensuring long-term mainstream action that resonates across the political spectrum, and to identify shared challenges while recognizing different contexts with the aim of driving improved policy advice and sustainable societal outcomes. What they're doing is deciding how to structure their government based upon the quality of life. One of the things I would love to see with the redevelopment of these sites is actually turning them into a community-based form of remediation, where we partner with different universities, we partner with different scientists, different small businesses to try and remediate this. Sometimes we have to do the job ourselves. If you want it done right, sometimes you have to do the job yourself. We have opportunity here to work with all of our wonderful, you know, vocational and technical schools here, UW Rock Branch, to try and figure this out. Stevens Point already has, you know, a mycology program, a hemp program focused on the remediation of soil. We can learn this, and we can create some sort of a jobs program to bring this site back to what it should be fully, rather than focusing on outsourcing this job. And I'll recommend reading pages 74 through 82 of this book because it's going to give you exactly what you need to hear with regards to our flourishing being mutual.
Thank you.
Greg Roy, Todd Needham, Sam Neamets, and Spencer Stats.
Getting down to the end of this evening, and I want to thank you all for being here and for allowing us to talk to you, expressing our opinions. I do want to say, though, I'm a little disappointed. I have written emails last week to all of you, and I only heard from Mr. Squire, so nobody, you're not paying attention. So I'm a little upset. I also, I don't know when the business manager started. Was it last year you joined us? Business Development Manager?
They're not here to answer your questions, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Just comment.
I don't know. I was just curious. Because last year, I wrote an email to her, or whoever it was, regarding an opportunity that Janesville has completely done nothing with, and I'll talk about it. So I'll begin. My name's Gregory Roy, sorry, 2831 Harvard Drive. I'm retired. I was 40 years in the process control and instruments industry. I have been to every plant from GM to ethanol all over the United States. So Veridian would remediate the property. So why not just finish the job, put a new cap on it? But why does it have to be a data center? Other than the Veridian proposal, are there any other companies or entities that are interested? Are there any other bids? Janesville has predominantly been an agricultural center. Why not invest in renewables? We have, has the city approached the renewable fuels people in Washington, DC? They operate and control the ethanol plants throughout the United States, and they're always looking for sites. With the right investors, these plants help our petroleum industry by cutting down on carbon emissions, so it's renewable. What about EV manufacturing? Everybody's been talking about that. With so many companies coming back to do business in the US, do you honestly think that any of them are aware of Janesville, Wisconsin? I doubt it. Somewhere, there has to be a list of those companies, and why isn't Janesville being As an expert in brownfields told me, how do we know Veridian will ensure that any cost overruns will be out of their pocket, not ours? Have the drills tests been conducted on the site? This is another question. And if so, are they available for public viewing? This same expert said that a cap is definitely feasible depending on the soil samples from the drill test sites. Finally, as of this morning, the Gazette News on the front story was that the CHS soybean plant scheduled for Evansville is now on hold. This is the very plant that I wrote to your Business Development Manager a year ago. Get involved, because they were looking for a site. Do you realize that it's going to be the largest soybean production plant in the United States? And it's going to attract traffic from Illinois, Iowa, Indiana, the Dakotas, Minnesota, and they're going to come by rail and then going to come by truck. And I don't know how far this project is, but it's been put on hold. So why not approach CHS now? Give Veridian some competition. Oh, okay. Invite CHS to walk the GM Jacko site with turnkey infrastructure.
Thank you, sir.
Of rail and highway. Thank you.
Todd Needham, and then Sam Neamets, Spencer Stats, and Marina Gukin.
Good evening, council members. My name is Todd Needham from 3717 White Pine Drive in Janesville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight, and thank you for your continued commitment to serve the community, especially during difficult conversations like tonight. I'm a Forward Janesville Board Member, and I'm also a partner at Baderman Engineering here in Janesville. And I'm here tonight to voice my strong support for the city of Janesville to enter into the letter of intent, letter of intent phase with Veridian Partners to explore redevelopment of the GM Jacko site. With Forward Janesville's Government Relations Committee, GM Jacko Work Group, and together with Forward Janesville staff, we spent considerable amount of time, weeks, months, to really dive deep into learning as much as we could about data centers. Obviously, it's a very hot topic in Wisconsin, specifically the Midwest in general right now. So it was important to us and for our members to really find out as much as we could and understand the impacts. So through the civil engineering industry associations and partners and some connections that I have, I was able to bring in some multiple nationally-recognized data center experts who've been in the data center space for over 25 years. So they offered some great insight as to how these developments work. I guess the constantly changing science of what a data center development looks like, the mitigation measures for the often talked about noise and sound pollution and water issues. And I think the big takeaway that I learned from many of them was that a data center development three years ago, or even five years ago, is not at all what a current data center looks like in today's age. So I know there's a lot of concerns within the community, but again, I think that we're in a different time right now with this industry moving so fast. As Jimsey mentioned earlier, the LOI is a non-binding agreement that initiates 120-day due diligence period, which allows the city and the developer time to answer critical questions about environmental conditions, energy capacity, and development feasibility. It's a responsible first step, not a final commitment. And the information gathered during this process is exactly what everybody has been clamoring for. So I don't understand why saying no at this particular junction, when we're finally able to get into some of the weeds as to what this would look like, you know, and understand if it's a good fit for Janesville, I don't understand the opposition to that. I respect people's opinion, but I think we're finally to the point that we're going to find out, you know, more of what we're looking for. Veridian Partners has a national reputation for transforming contaminated sites into economic engines. Their proposal includes noise and light controls, LEED-certified buildings, and renewable energy procurement, all designed to minimize community impact. Entering into this LOI is a strategic, low-risk step that allows us to gather the facts, engage the public in a detailed, meaningful way, which everybody is looking for, and evaluate the site's true potential. It positions Janesville to reclaim a long vacant property and build a future rooted in innovation, jobs, and sustainability. I strongly urge you to vote in favor of moving ahead with this LOI, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sam Neamets, Spencer Stats, Marina Gukin, and Brad Schmidt.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Neamets, and I'm an organizer for the Party for Socialism and Liberation, as well as a longtime resident of Janesville, right off of Center in Burbank. Thank you to everyone that is here tonight for sticking it out. I know it's been a long night. I know many of us would rather be at home with our families or watching the Packers right now, but you guys chose to be here, and that speaks volumes because you are here to speak up for our city. And we've already heard from many of you who have done the hard work of exposing the misleading claims in the city's myths versus facts campaign. misleading claims in the city's myths versus facts campaign. You've laid out the evidence clearly, which is the very real threat to our utility bills, the downplayed risks to our water, and the inflated jobs promises. We've heard the truth tonight, and that truth leads us to one undeniable conclusion. When the facts are so contested and the impacts are so permanent, the people must have the final say. This project has been presented as an undeniable favor to the community. But when the facts are so selectively chosen, it's not a favor. It's a risk we are being told to ignore. That is why we are pursuing a citizen's petition under Wisconsin Statute 9.20. This petition will force a simple choice upon you, the city council. Either you reject these massive, risky projects for the GM site, or you put the decision directly on the ballot for every voter in Janesville to decide. This isn't about being against development. This is about being for democracy. It's about ensuring that a decision of this magnitude, one that will impact our water, our utility bills, and our community for generations, is made by the people, not just for the people. We urge you to respect this process, let Janesville decide. And if you guys haven't signed the petition yet, find one of us with clipboards, who will be collecting signatures for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Spencer Stats, and then Marina, and Brad.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate you guys taking your time to listen to us here this evening. My name is Spencer Stats. I'm a representative of UA Plumbers Local 75. Represent approximately 1,800 men and women across southern Wisconsin. I am also a officer local Building and Construction Trades Council here in Janesville. I would encourage you folks to move forward with the letter of intent. Do yourselves a favor, put yourself in a seat and in a position to negotiate a good contract for the city of Janesville. These projects do generate very good union jobs. I know this firsthand, working with two other data center builders within my area that I represent. And I've also talked to my counterparts across the country where data centers have been constructed. These are good-paying union jobs, good wages and benefits, family-supporting jobs. These are not just through the construction phase, but these are ongoing construction jobs. These facilities are upgrading every three to five years, as these folks can tell you. So these workers are back in there over the years of life of the span of these projects. There's been a lot of great points this evening, both, you know, pros and cons for the projects. But some of these, some of the information is dated, right? As time goes on, technology improves. So the water usage of a project 10 years ago isn't the same, or the electricity draw isn't the same. So let's make sure that we're looking at the project at hand, and really what the details are of this project. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Marina Gukin here? And then is Brad Schmidt here?
My name is Marina Gukin, and I am a resident of downtown Janesville on East Home Street. I want to keep this short, as I think other speakers have made all the points that I want to, but I still want to add my voice as a neighbor that I am against the construction of a data center in Janesville. Despite all promises otherwise, looking at comparable data centers so that they are extremely unsustainable environmentally, they use an excessive amount of electricity and power and water for cooling. According to the International Energy Agency, an average AI data center uses as much electricity as 100,000 households. Meanwhile, the city of Janesville has only about 66,000 people, let alone households. This is a massive increase in energy usage for our community. The projected water use for the Janesville data center is approximately 25.7 million gallons per year. Data centers guzzle local resources while this one's promised to create only up to 600 permanent jobs, which I echo the concerns will not go to local residents. For these reasons and more, I believe any benefits of a data center would be short-term. I do not believe this is a sustainable solution for the GM site and for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Schmidt?
My name is Brad Schmidt, and I live on Submac Drive. Everybody made a lot of good points tonight. I guess I was just concerned about accountability, or like, lack of concern of accountability. You know, like, we had the Q&amp;A the other night, and there's a lot of good questions and some answers, but a lot of it sounded kind of like, you know, hem-hawing, like, well, they should, or we hope, or maybe, but, I mean, I don't think this is a good idea. You know, we've heard from a lot of people who have financial incentive that do think it's a good idea. I find that interesting, they're the only ones who are for it, but however we go ahead, I just hope you keep in mind, you know, like, how would you keep Veridian accountable for things? And, you know, they say they might do something, but, you know, can they be held to that? You know, or, you know, as far as like what they're paying for infrastructure to be improved? You know, a lot of people concerned about their electricity bills, you know, being increased. You know, I mean, it's nice, somebody gets to like build a bunch of towers, but Veridian themselves said they're paying for infrastructure on-site. So that rules out, you know, you know who's going to pay for everything else, from the power plant and for the lines, that's going to be taxed on everybody's bills. You know, I'm sure some people who, you know, might make money on this can pay their employers. You know, they probably make pretty good, but I'm sure they also have, you know, family or parents or grandparents, maybe, kids, you know, afford increases and things. You know, I'm just hoping we can keep that in mind and, you know, keep and try and think on how well you might be able to keep Veridian, you know, held accountable for what they say they're going to do, or if they can actually do things, or I really think we should look elsewhere and, you know, look more on this. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I hope I got these last two right. Tammy Jaeger did not want to speak, but wanted to inform you she is against the data center. And then Andy Jorgensen did not wish to speak, but is in favor of the data center. And that is all of the slips that I have completed.
Yeah, I feel you. Is there anybody else in the chambers wishing to speak on this matter?
Since I don't have a slip from you, if you're speaking now, I need your full name and address for the record, please.
This is Michael Ingles, 1623 South Ridge here in Janesville. Sadly, Kevin, you could just ignore most of this, you don't live here, doesn't pertain to you. I forgive you guys for being the way that you are. That's kind of heartless. You're taking advantage of a community. Appreciate the infomercial, that was definitely good. Your sales pitch, horrible. And for JP Cullen, really? You know you're going to get the bid on the job.
Mr. Ingles, you can address the city council, that's what your four minutes is for.
I can address the public, too. I know my rights. Secondly, JP Cullen, everybody else here, so I can address you guys and them. Of course, they're going to want to do this, they're going to promote it. Why? Because they're getting the bid for it. I'm not stupid. So for everybody else in here that you guys want to take advantage of, I forgive every last one of you people, you need to pray and take Christ first before you make a decision, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close the public comment. And so we're going to be on New Business D. Let me just recap this here quick. We had a presentation by economic developer Jimsey Kivorn and Veridian, and the council had the opportunity to ask questions at the time. Do we have additional questions now after the public hearing? Or, I'm sorry, public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like Jimsey back up here?
I've got a couple of questions. One, actually, for Mr. Bauer, if you would be so kind. Thank you for coming up, I appreciate you. Can you address to what level the cleanup will leave us at for any deed-backable land that we're speaking about?
I'm sorry, any what land?
Anything that might be deeded back to the community, or to the city for community use. What level of cleanup are we actually talking about?
This is more of a Steve question, you know, he's our technical expert as far as remediation.
I'm just not sure if we're talking industrial, are we talking non-industrial? What are we looking at?
Yeah. My name's Steve Nash with Veridian Partners. Typically, these sites will be cleaned up to an industrial standard, which basically means that they can be used for just about anything except single-family housing.
Okay. So given the situation we're at right now, currently, it is considered capped, and that would be an industrial standard.
Mm-hmm.
Am I correct in the assumption it would not change much between what it looks like now?
It will, it will change, because once you actually get out there to develop the site, you are going to expose all the contaminants again. And these contaminants have actually never been exposed, they've always been under the cap. So that's why we'll work with the DNR at that point, to come up with a plan, to manage soils, see if there's anything else that needs to come off the site, replace the soils in areas that are safe for the development eventually, and go. Nobody could go out there right now and just develop the site on top of what's there without impacting what's below.
From the, from the drawing, and I know they're just rendering.
Yeah.
It looks as though it's a grassy area that could be utilized in a variety of different ways. Are we looking at bringing it back to a grassy-type area?
Yeah. The way that we would propose doing it, obviously going through the DNR process, taking all the concrete off the site, recycling it, probably likely using that concrete on the developmental part of the site, and then bringing in two feet or more of clean fill, so that site could potentially just be left as open space, or be developed for commercial or other use.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. If I could ask, what is your experience with data centers? I know you've done a ton of remediation. What is your experience with data centers, and how would that come to be? How would they become involved? Would it be under contract? Would it be? What would that look like?
Yeah, we have two existing data center projects right now. And specifically for data center projects, we rely on our partner ASG. You know, the principal of ASG, Jared Appleby, is a 30-plus-year data center expert. He's been in, you know, C-suite roles in Equinix and Digital Realty and other big data center, public REITs or public companies. And so we rely on him a lot on the technical side of the data center, to everything from developing a site plan, to, you know, working with the power companies and finding the right uses. You know, our role, at some point, you know, we are a small company despite what some people think we are, not a billion-dollar public company. We are not the people that are going to build, vertically build these data centers. At some point, we will bring a partner in that will be under the development agreement that we have with the city that dictates a lot of the concerns that the public has here tonight, you know, what we have to do and what we aren't going to do, or unable to do. And we will work with them, you know, focusing on our remediation expertise as they, you know, build out the pads, we cap the site, get the no further action letter from the DNR, and then they build the vertical data center buildings.
So will it be your decision to make in regards to which project, whether the eight or the 11, or will that be decided by the company coming in?
You know, one of the concerns people had tonight is the vagueness of our proposal. And part of the reason it's vague is because this is a very iterative process. You know, if Alliance Energy comes back and says, "We can only give you 400 megawatts", okay, well, that's a different program than if we can do 800 megawatts. It changes, you know, the tax rate, it changes the jobs, it changes, you know, a lot of different things, it changes the interest of different people in the site.
What would, what would things look like to make you, as a corporation, walk away?
We have done deals that have taken five times the amount of time what they thought we were going to do, and we did not walk away from them. But, you know, if the council decides that they don't want to do a data center, we don't see another use that we can bring in that will pay for that remediation. If the council decides they want to raise taxes or find another way to pay this, well then, you know, we wish you all the best of luck. But that's the only, you know, again, as we talked about on the Gateway Site, it's coupling the needs and the wants of the community along with a use that's actually going to pay for that cost. So, but, you know, the project needs to be, you know, financially feasible, you know, the DNR, you know, we need to understand that the program that the DNR wants for the remediation and getting what's called a no further action letter, so, you know, health and human safety is their number-one priority in remediation. You know, but we've worked with some pretty tough regulatory agencies, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Eric mentioned, Department of Toxic Substance Control in California, and we've never walked away from a project because of regulatory challenges.
So, and I don't mean to sound like I'm grilling you, I'm really not. I just came up with a number of questions, I'd just like clarification on. In your experience with, and I understand it's limited, with data centers, how, how has the public been protected from rate increases? Because it seems like it's near impossible. When I look at case law and I look at statistics around the, around the country, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to prevent rate increases two, three, four years down the road.
And you are not wrong in that assumption. I mean, really, the rate increases need to be governed by the energy companies and by, and by your state, you know, by your state legislature. I think there was a good conversation tonight about what was, you know, on the floor in your state, and those things are there to actually protect consumers from those types of rate increases. But right now, the way the data center industry is evolving in general, and it is changing quite a bit, is that states and utility companies are putting the onus of all the infrastructure improvements back on the data center developers. That did not happen two years ago, four years ago, five years ago, but that is the way that the industry is evolving.
And I can understand the, the workings of getting that power there, all of the structural, you know, whatever it takes. But at the end of the day, when that data center is up and running, and it's a year later, two years later, three years later, when we start to see these rates influx, have you ever seen a, an agreement or a contract with an electrical company and a community that freezes those rates to protect the consumer, to protect the rate payer?
Not as it relates to the data center itself. The contracts between the data center developers and the power companies are, and one of the gentlemen here that was speaking mentioned this, and I usually call it power purchase agreements or construction agreements. Those will put protections in place to make sure that the upgrades to the infrastructure are paid.
Right.
With the intent that rates stay the same. But there's a lot of reasons that rates go up, and it's not just related to data centers, it's just related to the cost of generation, the cost of fossil fuels, all those types of things, which obviously data center developers can't control.
Right. And it probably doesn't directly involve you, so.
Yeah.
One other thing that, that I would like some clarification on, and I really don't know who would be the best to do that. I would like to know what the public health concerns look like from 600 megawatts of electricity. from 600 megawatts of electricity, 800 megawatts. Do we have a stray voltage issue that we might want to look at? You know, what does this look like for the community folks who are surrounding this property? And, you know, aside from just an air pollution or a light pollution, what are the real unseen, unheard effects, and how do we mitigate that?
I think you brought one up, just in general, about the EMF issues and things on transmission lines. The transmission line, somebody actually brought here that we would likely be connecting to is a 345 KV line. That's about five to six miles out of town. There's already a smaller voltage line that comes into the substation along a right-of-way, and that would need to be improved. And then, Alliance Energy, along with, you know, the utility commissions here, would also study that to make sure that all the improvements there are safe. I can't comment on the actual science of it. I'm not an electrical engineer. But, when we get further into this, we'll bring people that are...
The Alliance folks.
The Alliance folks and everybody into the process and make sure that the community is, you know, aware of how this is being engineered and if there are any effects.
I just... My concern lies with the community, certainly. And I just want to be sure that we are not taking these 35, 40 homes that surround the location and we're making them the sacrificial lambs. You know, I'm sorry that you've had peace and tranquility for 17 years. This is just for the better of the community. And are we, as a city, expecting that, for the good of the city, for the good of our tax base, for the good of our 65,000 people, is it worth this burden?
Yeah.
Thank you for your honesty. I appreciate it.
And I want to tack to a question you just had, you know, about health and safety because you guys are not... I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Health and safety because you guys are not data center experts. But, as you go through, if we approve this, as you go through the due diligence process, being able to connect us with current data center developers, because I certainly don't have the knowledge about the, you know, servers that are in there. What is their capacity? Because they obviously are taking care of employees that are there 24 hours a day, you know. So, what are the health concerns around those employees that then they are, you know, essentially, you know, translating then that to the neighborhood that Heather was just talking about? How do we make sure that the health of those employees matches up with the health of the neighborhood and the health of the community for some of these things that we talked about, like the PFOs and that type of thing? So, just as you go through that, you know, I expect those questions that are on everybody's mind to be the half that it solves as we work through the next 120 days if this is approved.
No, we appreciate that, and we'll make sure we're bringing in experts that can help educate everybody and be honest stewards of what's actually really going to happen.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, it was brought up that the possibility of an AI bubble. Say we get into this, we're a year and a half into a two-year cleanup, and the bubble bursts. What is your position then with continuing on? What would you guys do? And how would the city handle that?
Well, worst-case scenario, you know, you still have a blighted site, and we've lost a lot of money, and nobody's any farther ahead, right? You know, but I think Eric had a more relevant, you know, position where we were doing the site in Cranberry, New Jersey when the Great Recession hit. And, you know, that's why you don't do remediation incrementally. You do it all at once. And we managed to do it all at once, and then we had to sit on the site until the markets came back, and it could be put to productive use. But, I guess if we're at that phase in the process, then you would have a remediated site, you know. And if, you know, data center no longer worked for that site, well, you would have a remediated site, you know. There's a thousand variables there, so I'm trying not to be general or whatever, but it's a tough question to answer.
Counsel, do you have any further?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Councilmember Nino.
If I may, I move that we accept the File Resolution Number 2025-2394.
Okay. I've got a motion to accept File Resolution Number 2025-2394, a letter of intent with Veridian Acquisitions LLC for the redevelopment of the former GM JACCO site for potential data center development. Is that accurate, Councilmember Nino?
Yes, it is.
All right. I'll need a second. I have a motion by Nino and a second by Squire that'll move for discussion. Councilmembers, if you have something to say to discuss this.
Do you want to start with Nino?
I... A lot of people have a lot of questions and concerns. I share a lot of those concerns and have a lot of questions myself. This is, I think, the one way we're going to get them is going to this next step. I think Veridian has to prove themselves to us. We've gotten burned twice, once by GM and once by the former owner. That's a huge concern that I have and that I know a lot of people in the city have, is a lack of trust in the people that come here and say they're going to do things. And I just really think that we need to see it, and we need to get more answers before we vote to approve any development.
All right. Councilmember... Council Vice President Squire.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I certainly appreciate everybody's comments and questions and conversation around this. And this is, in my mind, you know, the letter of intent is a letter to learn, you know, a letter to explore. It's not a letter to do. And it leaves the option for us to figure out, you know, all the questions that were asked here. What are the must-haves that we have to have to take care of our community to make sure that we're doing the right things for the right reasons for the next step? That's what a letter of intent, in my mind and in my history of doing other letters of intent in business, are all about. It's a letter to learn, a letter to explore, a letter to have conversation, and then make final decisions. And maybe that final decision is to push. Maybe that final decision is to wait. That'll be between, you know, all the parties involved in this. And it's up to us to have good conversation around it. Make sure those questions that were asked are being formulated properly so that we're knowing what are the must-haves, that we're getting conversation about health and welfare from experts that are not, you know, from one side but down the middle and giving us what we want to do. So, that's what we need to have in my mind and why I'm, you know, willing to move to this letter of intent, because it's a letter to learn and a letter to take some next steps.
Councilmember Erdman.
When the council almost two years ago now made the decision to, we'll call it condemn, just so that everybody conceptualizes the taking of the GM JACCO property, even if that's not the legal term here. When they made that commitment, and most of the council members up here were part of that decision, they were well-aware of the fact that it was potentially going to take $30 to $35 million to clean up the site. They knew at the time that it was going to take an unknown amount of time, honestly. It should not have been a surprise that there was the potential that the federal and state funding that had been there could potentially disappear, and that was going to be an effect that was going to extend this out. And yet, from that time period, nothing was done to attempt to try to produce a deliberate plan as to what kinds of things we might want to see on that site. City Manager Lehner at the Forward Janesville Breakfast made the commentary that it would have been really nice to have had a plan in place when this development suddenly showed up. And that's true. Unfortunately, that plan was being asked for for a two-year period, and we did nothing about that. So, as a result, here we are. Instead of making decisions from a deliberate place, we're coming at this from a place of desperation. We're coming at this as a place of, this is our only option because goodness, how are we going to pay for this otherwise? Even though the council went into this knowing that that was potentially a risk as part of this. And the first thing that came along, suddenly, we're willing to just immediately jump on without even having anything to compare it to. It would have been really nice to have this as a comparison to other potential projects that could have shown up so that we were doing this deliberately and not just desperately. Ms. Martinez actually mentioned the city's daddy issues at the last council meeting. And that kind of resonates a little bit because we're looking for another GM to sort of help make sure that we can pay for ourselves. But, the difference there is that at least GM has jobs. GM had the people who were gainfully employed with GM were the ones living immediately around it. So, for them, if they had to deal with the noise from three shifts, it was okay because that was giving them a paycheck. We don't have any of those circumstances potentially here, and we don't know what else we could have compared this to. One of the things that I have watched previous administrations and this administration do, and what I'm most worried about here, is the city manager says we're at the one-yard line. The problem is the administrations have continuously come back with sunken costs that I'll see some other time, and suddenly, we'll find ourselves at the other one-yard line. And, oh, we've just gone so far that we can't go... We have to go forward with it at this point. It is super, super important that there actually is due diligence, like... And that doesn't just mean flying out and standing next to a data center in a community that has an airport so that you can't hear it in the first place. We have to do real due diligence, no matter what, whether this goes forward tonight or not. And unfortunately, I don't know at this point that I feel that I can trust either the administration because we've watched how the lack of planning went, how we watched how the not very well-construction of the GM JACCO Advisory Board and its use kind of has proceeded. The fact that we've had issues with legally following through with FOIA's without having to have other agencies step in and force the city to do so. All of these things bring up questions as to whether this administration and even whether four out of seven council members are actually going to make sure that all the due diligence to protect everybody involved is there so that we go forward together as a community. And at least what negative effects that somebody might have to deal with have absolutely have been compensated for to the extent that they can be. So, tonight, I will be voting no as a result of that. If this had been a deliberate, instead of a desperate act, we'd be in a different place tonight.
Councilmember Miller.
So, my biggest concern at this point is public health. And that's really the only expert we have not heard word one from. We need to know what these long-term and short-term effects are regarding public health. What... I don't want to learn that halfway through this process that there are risks that we didn't know about, and that's a very real possibility. I know enough about electricity to be dangerous. So, you know, when I think about stray voltage, I think about just, I mean, you can only imagine. And those are long-term effects. Those are not something we're going to see day one. And without being able to have input from someone about public health makes me concerned for the residents that surround this property. And so, I'm not convinced that we're in the right place to do this LOI at this time based on public health.
Councilmember Nino online, do you have any comments?
Yes. I mean, I think as we all have experienced, the last month has been particularly trying. And I have, you know, as we all have, received hundreds of emails, and I've read thousands of Facebook comments. And I think it's critical that we go forward with this LOI because what's become clear to me is virtually no one knows what the Janesville data center will end up entailing in terms of public health, energy use, water use, employment. I mean, this is why we need to investigate. It's only by going forward with the LOI that we do the investigation that gives us the answers, good, bad, whichever, so that people can have some degree of comfort or at least knowledge of what this will entail and so that the council can ultimately make an informed decision. Because, I mean, perhaps most important of all this is to remember, this is not a binding agreement. It's an agreement to work together in the hopes of coming up with an operating and purchasing agreement that is mutually beneficial and that answers all the questions and sets all the necessary parameters. The administration is going to be spending the next 120 days working extremely hard on putting together what I think we all hope will be a very airtight and very complete purchase agreement, operating agreement for this property in order to bring to the council to be able to answer the questions and concerns that we have, not to mention the questions and concerns of the public. I've already had conversation with City Manager Lehner. I know that there's going to be quite a few public input sessions in the development of this purchasing and operating agreement. Much of what we heard tonight is based on concerns based on other and older data centers rather than what this data center will be. I mean, we're not talking... We're talking about construction beginning two years from now. And I think if anything is known about this industry is that changes will occur significantly in the way things are done and run and the energy used and the water used in the next two years. We need to use this time to try to gain all possible information as to what we're going to be asked to approve for the city with the understanding that, right now, very little of that is known. And many of the concerns that people have expressed, while legitimate and heartfelt and truly believed, don't necessarily apply to what will end up on the ground two years from now in Janesville. But, at a minimum, we have to go forward. We have to do our due diligence. We have to come up with answers. This is, quite frankly, a great opportunity for the city. It's certainly too good an opportunity to walk away from without even trying to get answers as to what it will entail. This is very, very important. It needs the consideration of time to get the answers. And hopefully, by doing so, we can calm people, satisfy people, and make a very good decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
I agree with Councilmember Nino. I think we were elected to do a job. Certainly, at times, it's easy. Sometimes, it's fun. Sometimes, it's not. We certainly, when you go into this job on the Janesville City Council, you're not doing it for money. Put almost 20 years into this. When I first got off, right after that, GM closed. And now, I'm getting towards my time on whether or not I'm going to continue doing this. And here we're seeing now we have the opportunity for something to go into the GM site. It's kind of full circle. I believe that the only thing that we... I believe that we need to do the letter of intent to do our due diligence and find out just exactly what it is. So, I will be voting in favor of it.
All right. Thank you. So, when I was on the council when we decided to go through with acquiring the GM property, I never would have believed that we put a data center there, you know. But, the reality is this, is that, you know, and I've asked this question to multiple different people. Is there any other development that would be willing to pay?
different people, is there any other development that would be willing to pay for cleanup of the site and then, and then add that development, basically capital to the tax base? And the answer is no. Any part of agreement or anything that I voted on, we've usually given them some kind of incentive. Either we've given, we sell the land for a dollar, put it in, give them TIF financing, and really, that's the reality. This is, this is an opportunity that came up, and based on the size of the opportunity, is there questions? Absolutely, you know? Am I 100% like, rah rah rah, we're going to put a data center in Janesville? Absolutely not, I'm not. But I'm smart enough to understand that this potential, you know, as long as the due diligence is done, and we can weigh the pros and cons, and if this is appropriate for the city, and there's no long-lasting negative impacts, which obviously are concerns, and some of these have been answered through these processes, right? From a more generic standpoint, right? When we sit here and do the 120-day due diligence, this is when they should be drilling down, talking with the DNR, who basically would approve the site, and these other industry experts that are independent, right? I mean, obviously, we, you know, we want information from people that aren't getting paid, right? That based on the outcome, are they going to make money on the deal? That's what I'd like to see. I think that's what this council wants to see, and to be honest with you, I don't think anybody's up here sitting there rubber-stamping this deal, okay? If the due diligence is done, the questions are answered to the satisfaction. Is it going to be a perfect deal? Absolutely not, none of them ever are. But we have to weigh what's best for the whole city of Janesville and, you know, and its viability into the future, and sometimes that takes money, you know? We're not greedy, it's just the natural fact, in order to maintain with the rate of inflation and maintaining the standards of the city and its amenities, either raise revenue by taxing people or you find development opportunities, and this is one that could actually make a significant difference. So that's why I think I support moving forward with this letter of intent, so... Anybody else? Let's go ahead and vote, roll call, please.
Council President Burdick?
Yes.
Vice President Squire?
Yes.
Councilmember Nino?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Cass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Councilmember Erdman?
No.
That passes 5-2 with Miller and Erdman voting no.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item nine, common council announcements. Is there any announcements for, from the council? Here are none, moved to item 10, adjournment. Do I have a motion? I got a motion by Williams, a second?
Second.
Second by Cass. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.